Welcome everyone to the 77th. Please two seal our executive session minutes. The move second back in favor. Another question based on adjournment, the second session. The move back in favor. No votes for anything. Thank you. Please join me for the pleasure of the evenings.
Pleasure leaving this to the light. The United States of America and to everybody who is again on my nation. I'm here in this role of a reading and test for all.
Well, give you five minutes. Yeah, I give you all the many rules that make so many of your friends. Anyone certifying was challenged and that document. I make a motion to seal it.
Back in the favor. Thank you. All right, this is our first opportunity. For public comment, first two opportunities both in public hearing and in person. So if you have wish to adjourn the committee, I'd like to please sit to the lectern and sign in. And state your name and address. We have about fifty three minutes to address the committee on whatever matter you have. I'm delighted to meet some students here at the evening, so we're happy to have you. Make the most of this opportunity to address the committee. Thank you, so. You can also sign in now. You can speak for a future people.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yes, absolutely. It's roughly.
Yeah, okay. My name is Katie Alvin, Rehoboth, Massachusetts. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, who has a daughter in the district. I'm speaking on behalf of the gender policy. Just to keep everybody in mind, this policy is a buzzword safe very often. And only used with safe that the narrative this committee wants to push forward. I would also like to ask the question on did this gender policy pass the subcommittee? I could not find if it did pass subcommittees or if it's just bringing forward. The gender policy has two major flaws. Number one, students being able to use locker rooms that don't align with their biological sex. Why should a biological female student have to change from biological male? Why should biological female students be subject to a biological male student's private parts? Why are we not keeping women's spaces safe? Why aren't biological female students feelings and emotions not taken into consideration? But biological male and female students who identify as the opposite sex taken into consideration more? I can say for a fact that most biological male or female athletes that are going to change in their locker rooms will not speak up against this topic for fear of being fully harassed and being anti LGBTQ plus, which is not true. They will not speak up because of these reasons, not because they are anti LGBTQ at all. The solution to this is super simple. And it creates an equal opportunity for everybody. Use the second floor bathroom in the high school for a gender neutral person. Or change in the nurse's office. This will prevent any biological male or female student from seeing any vagina or penis that they are not privy to. Second, keeping male, keeping name and pronunciations away from parents. I'm a licensed medical health professional in the state of Rhode Island. And students who identify, which is biologically different than the sex that they are born into, have a statistically higher self harm and suicidal ideation rate. That is fact. You can't disprove that. So not telling parents about this significant risk is putting those children in harm when they are home with their parents. It is not allowing the parent to parent them outside of school hour correctly. So if a child has suicidal ideation, self harm, or God forbid, is successful at suicide, the Barrington School Committee is responsible for not telling the parents the risk of that behavior. That is on you in your conscience. This gender policy is flawed and inequitable. If you vote for this policy, you are not taking biological female students into consideration and parenting other people's children. Protect female athletes' safe spaces and parents' rights over virtue signaling and your own political agendas. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Ryer and I'm on Western Avenue in Barrington. I'm commenting tonight to voice my removal of the gender support policy amendment on tonight's agenda. I'd like to thank the district for already having the bulk of this policy in place. Those who don't have experience as a gender queer person or caring for one may not understand the value of this policy. Protecting the health and safety of students and the privacy of older students is critical. For older students, their personal information should only be made public when they are ready. It is important to note that the existing policy encourages disclosure to parents and only withholds the information when there is too much risk. These aspects are important to retain. Parental rights go hand in hand with parental responsibility. As the parents of a student in this district, my wife and I know that our responsibility is to create a faith and trusting environment so that as our son learns and grows, he will share that learning growth with us. My parents created that environment for me. We have a loving, trusting, and supportive relationship. And even still, when I came to understand my gender identity, I first spoke to other trusted adults before expressing my identity with a non-binary person to my parents. I would have been devastated if somebody else had done that before I was ready. I support the amendments highlighted in the posted policy update as well as the underlying policy. I ask that you move forward and vote these changes into place at your next meeting with no substantive alteration. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Nguyen and I am a very resident. I live at Twenty Clark Road and I have two children and a baby. Well, script, I want to thank all of you for your all the time that you spend dedicated this activity to our community. I know it's significant time and space for everyone. During the daytime, I am the president and CEO of Open Door Health, which is the state's first and only LGBTQ clinic. We opened this clinic in twenty twenty in response to an overwhelming tsunami of unmet need for primary care and sexual health care for sexual and gender minorities across the state. We take care of a lot of adolescents and young folks and many Barrington residents, by the way. So members of our community are people that we take care of. This, and I want to applaud the committee for the progressive proposed changes. Understand that some amendments might be made, but I think they're moving in the right direction. We take care of a lot of people who've experienced discrimination in the community by the medical system and often in their own homes. And when people are at risk for experiencing harm in their own homes based on their gender identity or sexual expression, sexual expression, I believe we have a duty to clearly those people. We end up taking care of all the people who've experienced all of those health harms and mental health harms. And it's something important. This push against this is part of a coordinated national effort to discriminate against sexual and gender minorities across the United States. And it's infiltrating all access of government from federal, state, and right down to the local level. And I want to speak out firmly against it. We cannot endorse discrimination in our school district. And we should be providing opportunities and affirming all of the children. We have an ethical duty to do that. And I really hope that we don't, that we push back against this discriminatory movement. I just again want to say that I applaud you all for the progressive changes that you're making. And thank you very much. Nice timing.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Schaefer, two main fellow panel. I'm going to also address this gender policy that's been proposed for our first read. First of all, I would ask that the first read, if possible, be postponed. Pardon me. I think too, I think it's widely known that this is a highly charged issue. And this agenda is very long tonight. And with such a heavily weighted and important issue, I wonder if it might be better served. For example, I think there's a meeting January fourth when we come back from the holiday. When this isn't rushed through with a really long lengthy agenda. I think it deserves a lot of time and attention from the community. With that said, I would like to speak to this notion that there's sort of a false equivalency that's happening. That if anybody has some concerns about the languaging in this policy, that parents should be informed or what have you, that they're part of some national agenda to be anti LGBTQ A plus. That, that is a false equivalency. And somebody having concerns about a child experiencing such a huge issue that, that we can only, you know, we can only imagine what a child is going through at such a tender time in your life and what they're exploring and having to face to just talk that up to some national agenda of parents. I, I'm not part of a national agenda. And I have concern for any child who's going through this in this community. My child lives in this community. My family is here. My child's friends go to college. This impacts all of us. And I categorically reject that because I'm up here advocating for families and parental involvement that I would be labeled as being part of a national discriminatory agenda. My family, my child, do not discriminate. And we care about the children in this community very, very deeply. With that in mind, this policy proposes to outright lie to parents and to create a, a web of lies to keep a child's transitioning or, or gender expression a secret from the parent. Even, even if that was supported, it's not even possible. Eventually, if this child, if we're embracing this child in the community, the parents and the family are going to find out anyway. So is the hope that you just keep the parent from finding out long enough to channel the child into medical and psychological authority of other adults? Long enough that you can get that going? And then the parent's going to find out anyway, but it's too late for the, for the parents at that point. So lying to parents just, it needs to be taken out of this policy. The, the other highly, another highly problematic part of this policy is to mandate that the adults, the teachers, the staff, the administration have to be compelled to the speech to go along with these affirmations. You know, if there was a child, God forbid, you know, who's anorexic, for example, we wouldn't want to affirm this mental anguish that this child is in by agreeing with them that they're fat. And I don't really appreciate the eye rolling, Ms. Douglas. I, I don't even need it. You just tell me that you don't appreciate your head and eye roll. This is very serious. This isn't about eye rolling at a constituent, a member of the public because you don't, you don't.
The shape, the shape, right, please, thank you.
Okay.
I will.
And the last point that I want to make is also to just reiterate and support the previous comment that this is in imbalance with also protecting the privacy and the means of, excuse me, the biological, you know, girls and boys who are uncomfortable with the exposure to the opposite sex in their private spaces. We are going to design new buildings. Let's design in the, the open bathrooms for whoever is comfortable going into that non-private space. Thank you very much.
Hi, Kylie Daly, seven Greenbrier Drive. I'm here also to talk about the gender support and the policy that was put in place. I'm a member of the Health and Wellness Committee. And we had a meeting this past week and I was hoping to discuss this policy and support in that meeting, but I was told that it probably wasn't the best place for it. And then I was come here to discuss it tonight, which was somewhat concerning because I would think that this would fall under health and wellness. And during those meetings, we're able to have a lot more discussions. Whereas here, I'm kind of just speaking without getting anything back. So I would think that this would fall under health and wellness policy. It was never brought up last year when I was on the committee. It hasn't brought up this year, but then it was put in tonight's agenda to have a first read. So I was somewhat confused by the fact that we never actually got to like speak on it. I heard that it was put in place about ten, fifteen years ago, but then it just recently got brought that up because they wanted to add new language, adding like the word diverse or gender diverse to it. And some of the things that were changed. So I have a copy of the policy and the things that were highlighted, I guess, were the things that were added or changed or modified. And just some of the things that I'm confused about or the wording of using the word safety and risk are used multiple times in determining a factor on how things would be handled. And a lot of this comes back down to the very fact that it relies on the superintendent to make the decision. And I feel like that's an unfair burden to put on just one human being to determine if something is actually, you know, like if someone is unsafe or if there's a risk. And if there's someone who is truly at risk of being harmed at home in any sort of physical way, I would believe that the police and ECYF would be the first people that you'd call. If you believe a child, a child is being, you know, harmed at home or abused at home or has a real risk of being able to talk to their parents in any sort of way, I would think that our first line of defense would be the police, the ECYF. And if something were to actually legally happen to this child or something harmful happened, and we decided that the superintendent was the one making the decisions, this is going to fall on their head, that this is like who we go after if something were to happen. So I'm really hopeful with that. When it comes down to the policy and the plan that's put in place, there's a few lines on here for the support, talking about what bathrooms would be used, what changing rooms would be used. And I feel that we have gender neutral bathrooms. We have single stall bathrooms that the only place that they should be used by someone is in a single stall room. That we do not, I don't think, we've seen throughout the country what has been happening and what has happened. Having like a biological teenage male enter a little locker room or being able to be in the bathroom with them alone. I find it, you know, incredibly disturbing. I personally wouldn't want to enter a woman's bathroom and have like a six foot five guy there. We've seen throughout the middle school that a female has entered the boys bathroom and is taking Snapchat pictures and posting it all over line of boys in the bathroom. And those boys were incredibly uncomfortable. Like not only are you invading their privacy, you're putting harm to like females, males, both alike. There's not a need for it. We have gender neutral bathrooms. If you want to accommodate someone, if you want to be changed and getting dressed, you can do it in a neutral bathroom that we have available. They can still be accommodated. And then there was another line about field trips and what rooms you would use on overnight trips. And my daughter is in the eighth grade and she's going on the DC trip. I actually emailed Dr. Anderson asking this question. It didn't even like thing to occur to me would we possibly have coed rooms for those who are identifying differently, mixed matching with genders, sharing a room? And there's no adult supervision in that room as well? I also don't think that that's something that should be in this policy. That if you want to be accommodated and you don't want to share, you could have a single room. They're having it on the DC trip where you get to choose if you want a single, double, or a quad. And so I don't think we should mix genders, biological genders in those overnight trips. And I guess that those are the biggest topics. But I would like to be able to, I was hoping that we could also be able to discuss this at the health next health and wellness meeting. And like I said, have feedback, have the group that is concerned with like these different policies that everybody is going to put in place. We discussed the health and wellness policy that was revised or discussing the health curriculum. So I feel like this policy and these support plans are something that we should be allowed to discuss at the, at the next meeting. And maybe we should table this read until we can have more voices. Thank you.
I wanted to bring attention to the fact that the first thing that a sexual predator does once they've targeted a child is to establish a secret between themselves and the targeted child. Okay, that fact alone sheds the most damning light on those who are here today to enable the establishment of a school-wide policy that would endanger other people's children. Creating this policy of secrecy would endanger our children while in our community schools. And worse, it would habituate our children to behaviors that are extremely dangerous to their overall well-being. Concerns for the health and safety align strongly with communicating with parents around any and all psychological, social, or physical concerns of any children in the school. To not do so is to endanger children by precluding the ability of their parents to secure professional help as needed. It is horrendously irresponsible and would lead to harms. Equating parents with the public, as has been previously done here tonight, is reprehensible. It implies a closer intimacy with our children on the part of the school staff than the children's parents. Okay, parental rights are paramount. They are not subject to or limited to by any school policy nor any administrator's whim. They are not cancelable by claims of harm or danger, vague specific claims. In other words, scampering. It is not discrimination against children, as it also been asserted here, to work cooperatively with the children's parents, the people who know them best and love them the most.
My name is Jennifer Suplesby and I'm a resident here in Barrington. I'm also a teacher at the high school. I'm not going to have a lot of my students here tonight, which I had no idea. I don't have prepared remarks. I have reflected deeply on this gender policy for a few years now. And I'm going to speak from the heart. And it's concerning to me on a poor level that I'm as nervous as I am to speak about it because the climate does not support, in my experience, diverse opinions on this topic. And yet I feel compelled to offer another perspective despite the risk it might put to me at work. It's very difficult to be in a classroom when your own conscience as an individual is put in question. I echo the comments that have already been made that we, and I can speak for myself, but for so many others, I'm sure that the best interest of the safety and health and well-being of our children in this community is number one. I experience firsthand front seats every day, the struggles that many of my students have in a variety of areas due to many factors, death of a parent, illness, some sort of tragedy, some typical social teenage angst, as well as the myriad of issues that come with the exploration of one's personhood at this age. I agree, it's a tender age. And as an educator of children and as a parent of children who are either in the school still at the high school or have gone through the system, I have grave concerns that parents are not their rent, their rights to, not even a right. It's, it's, I, I'm so concerned about all the terminology and the labeling, just the inherent commitment that every parent has to their child that that would be or gone is unconscionable in my conscience, in my view. And I feel every day that I am asked to overlook what my conscience tells me is best for children, which is to not withhold information from a parent. The ramifications are potential, not definitive, but there are safeguards for children who are at risk of harm. And that's ECYF. I've explored this extensively. I've talked to many professionals and ECYF. I am a mandated reporter. I've had the experience of having to mandate reports, not related to this particular topic, but there are safeguards for children. And I just can't emphasize enough how much I ask for pause before moving forward with this. It puts parents and also educators like myself in positions where we're being asked to act outside the bounds of our own individual conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Steven Felix. I'm a resident here in Barrington. I have two kids in public schools. And I'm here to support the existing policy and the proposed amendments. I can see why a lot of parents see this as an affront to their rights or their control. But I also believe that the policy strikes an appropriate balance between prioritizing our young adults' well-being and giving them a certain amount of necessary autonomy while still encouraging parental involvement. I know there are many who might like to see this policy removed or significantly altered so that parents can have more control or more rights. But I, I don't see this as being about parents. This is about the well-being of our students. And I think there's plenty And I think there's plenty of evidence out there to show that parental involvement in young adults' gender identities is a very mixed bag. And I'm not just talking about physical abuse. Students need to have space where they can choose when and how to have family involvement in this very sensitive part of their identity. Without this choice, I think we run the risk of driving our most vulnerable students into further silence in isolation.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jared Ryan. I live at 99 Rocking Street. Uh, everyone comes to Barrington for the schools. Everyone cares about their children very deeply. This community is very special in that way. Uh, when it comes to matters like keeping parents out of the conversation in terms of mental health or gender-affirming care, things of that nature, it, it kind of raises red flags. We want to make sure that parents are part of that conversation. It's very important to realize that parents have 100% to do with the child even throughout high school. It's important to realize that these, these children, these students have a strong home. They have people that care very deeply and they have people that sacrifice every day. That, you know, go do and travel an hour up to work and then three hours back just so that they can enjoy these schools and these traditions in this community. So taking parents out of the conversation is a huge red flag and it shouldn't happen. It's very important to realize that the students are cared for by their parents 100% unequivocally. They have 100% to do with everything in their life. And when a state staffer is going to go out of their way and tell a student that, oh, well, we're not going to tell your parents, don't worry. It shouldn't be up to anyone, any part of the state to say, hey, well, you know, we won't tell your parents. Because it's a mental health issue, because it could result in suicide, it could result in other actions and very, very prominent mental health issues have happened to people that have, you know, come out and latched out against others. It's important to realize that parents want the best for their children, especially in this community. So we need to keep that in mind. So why, so we should be able to kind of spearhead a move here and be strong enough, have enough backbone, make the right choice and to realize that parents have to be involved, especially in matters like this. It's, it's important for the cultivation of students as well to have a good, strong basis, whether to affirm or whether to find or seek help, one way or the other, doesn't matter. That's dependent on the household. That's not dependent on the state. Um, and another thing is I had four older sisters, right? I care deeply for my sisters and I would never want them be in a bathroom with a biological male. Just that chance that it presents, an opportunity, vulnerability, violation of safety for females is under no circumstances should be allowed in a public school. Because who's going to want their child, their daughter, to be in a school that allows biological males to just go in there saying that they're gender-affirmed and then one day maybe, maybe they become predators. Who knows? Anything can happen and it's these safeguards that have to be in place so that all the children in the school are protected. And all the families are encouraged to stay active and proactive in the child's life so that they can come together and make the right decision for them, whether it's to affirm or whether it's to seek help in other ways. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lian Kassar, Tuba Court. And first I'd just like to say thank you to the school administration and the school committee for a history of supporting the policy that's currently in place. Which in fact is safe and has proven to work for the school. Um, any challenges to the, to the policy that's in place are disruptive and unsafe for students basically needs. Um, supportive policies for gender diverse youth are about creating an environment that is safe and where they can thrive no matter what. Of course, the ideal is that parents of youth are involved in their lives and are able to have open communication. But anyone who has been through adolescence understands that there are occasions when that is not the case, even with the simplest of situations. It is critical for young people to have trusted adults in their communities, in their lives, in their schools um that they can speak to as they prepare and understand the implications of the complex conversations they would have if they choose to transition or if they choose to disclose that they are in any way gender diverse. Some of those conversations need to be prepared for, even the conversations at home. Our public schools have a responsibility to ensure that all students have a safe, supportive environment to learn. Currently, our schools do just that in this area. I urge you to support the policy as it is, make no amendments pending the court. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Please, so we can hear you.
Oh, hi, Lisa Daft, Five Robbins Drive. I'm here tonight to discuss the gender support policy that's in the material packet for tonight. Um, I was wondering if somebody, either the school attorney or Mr. Missouri were able to answer. I just had one question as to who wrote the words highlighted in the support segment of that policy that, that was changed or added to? Where did that come from?
It came through the subcommittee, the policy committee.
It, did, did somebody just write the word or did they come from somewhere else?
No, the edits that are shown in the document are highlighted on request of the school committees. We understand what's changed in the original policy. So that just comes from our policy subcommittee.
Okay, I mean, does, um, anyone from the subcommittee, is, are they there? Like, they could say where those words came from? Like, did they just make them up there or did it come from a policy from RIDE or anything like that?
I mean, I can say that I, I think not with respect to those specific words, but that the policy itself in policy subcommittee was discussed based on the RIDE guidance, Title IX, and the advisory agents that have come out since then and that's the law.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Aubrey. Um, I'm, I'm actually just kind of shocked that I, I'm actually having to be here tonight um to, to talk about the Barrington School Department, um, you know, Barrington Public Schools, actually trying to restrict parental rights. Uh, both my children went through the schools. Um, I've lived in town for a long time and um, after being very involved, I know that we pride ourselves on how involved parents are. We always talk about, you know, how great we are at involving parents, as they should be. It's what has made our district great, you know, for, forever. Um, I'm, I'm here tonight also just to ask you to review the policy, um, especially the changes in the gender support policy. That is not what was, you know, in the, the protocols that have been listed online for, for several years. Um, and please consider removing the language that states the school will not inform parents if they deem that the home is unsafe for the child. Uh, the, these are mostly minors. Obviously, most of the kids are under 18. Um, and, um, you know, if they're going to dis- the school gets to dis- the, the school decides if the home is, is unsafe for the child to disclose their intentions. Um, I feel this is another very, you know, divisive initiative, parental rights. We've all been hearing about that. Um, and it's my understanding that, that this, this wordage, this language has come from, you know, from RIDE. Um, they, they obviously do make recommendations, um, but these are just recommendations. They can be altered. They can even be rejected if the district or a district decides to do so. I am concerned that this policy will subject our district to future lawsuits. I did email the whole school committee, um, several recent national lawsuits. Um, and the outcomes of just the, you know, several, about six of them that I sent, uh, the parents, these were not just from, from parents. There were also teachers that sued, um, and both the parents and teachers, they're winning in court. Um, our district has already, already lost three highly respected teachers and $600,000 due to overreaching divisive policymaking. Barrington went over RIDE's recommendations with the vaccine mandate policy, so clearly that we can for any policy that RIDE, um, you know, puts up as a recommendation. This policy to me opens up so much more. For instance, um, I agree, we live in a very small town. I, I find it hard to believe that you don't think parents are going to find out through the grapevine what's happening at school and when they do, prepare for lawsuit. Um, about 30%, I'm so glad there was a teacher there tonight. Um, I applaud her for having the bravery to get up in front of everyone um, to, to speak. I, I can only imagine how difficult that was for her. So, um, I know about 30% of our teachers live in town and I don't know how you, as a subcommittee, asked them, um, if they think this policy will make it difficult when they see these families on the soccer field in Shaws and CVS. And, you know, they can be really put in a, in a predicament for themselves and making it hard to keep the secret. So um, I, I wonder if, if anyone's really talked to them. I also have a lot of questions. Um, and I would like to know more possibly, obviously, at another time, but how, how does the school determine if the home is not safe? Is it just because the kid says so, a student says so? Um, there's a lot of questions I have about how that part of the equation works. Um, and I, I do question that if, if the school's going to allow this, you know, how far does it get to go with, when they would want some medications and things like that to to, to continue down their, their transition. Um, and I, I, I question just how this policy aligns with other sensitive issues like teenage pregnancy, cutting, eating disorders. Um, does the school keep these conditions from parents because they don't feel safe at home to disclose? I mean, we can't have one without the other. Um, I, I am actually really shocked, um, to see that Barrington feels it's okay to keep these types of things from parents. Um, I'm not a, I'm not a, a therapist, licensed therapist. I've done a lot of research on my own when I've seen topics like this come up. And we know that the, um, uh, suicide attempts amongst the trans community is, is, is much higher than, than the average, um, you know, than in the average. So I, I find it hard to believe that, um, getting parents involved is, is, or not informing parents is going to help the situation. I agree with what other people said, that we have avenues, just like you do for every other type of incident that the school deals with on a daily basis. And that involves going outside to other mental health referrals, therapy referrals, and there's also DCYF and, and the police. And, and just because that we are here speaking about this, I do want to also speak to the fact that this does not mean that we are here to, uh, be called, you know, that we're discriminating against anybody. That's not what this is about at all. This is just not the way to handle it. And I would hope that there'd be a better discussion about this. So thank you very much for allowing the time to, to, to talk about this. Thanks.
Hi, this is Erica Tuig from Four Eleanor Drive. Um, just, hi, um, just want to start off with, I didn't prepare anything, but I wanted to start off with the fact that I'm not discriminating against anybody before I make my comments. However, um, I'm really, really concerned with the part a lot of people have already spoken about, about not telling parents or letting parents know if a child feels unsafe. And the reason why, and I know there are instances where a child may feel unsafe, but who makes that determination? Like, where is the policy or the outline or the detail and who makes that decision? I get it's supposed to be up to the superintendent, but what's the training there? Um, I feel like DCYF needs to be involved at that point. And then also, if the parents aren't involved, what is the school allowing or enabling the child to do? That's the big concern as well. Um, so I think that needs to be before this read happens or before anything's approved, that detail has to come out. This can't just be, yes, we're going to allow this, this child to not tell their parents and we're going to help them with their new gender identity, but what does that mean? Really need to understand that as a community, like what does that mean? What are we allowing other adults to do with minors? That is fit, both physical and medical, medically physical. I can't even think of the right words, right? But also, um, emotional and for their mental health. So this is, this is a huge concern for me. Um, I read through the rest of it. I have other concerns, but this is the biggest red flag for me is to not to, to put this on the superintendent first of all, but also to not have an expert working with the child in this area. Um, and not allowing the parents to be involved or their doctor. I don't even know at this point what the right answer is, but I have a really big concern about this and I implore you to not approve this and to explore this further. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, this is Maura McCran for Woodford Road. Um, gosh, I had not intended to speak tonight, so I apologize that I will be rambling and I'm listening to comments and gosh, I have a lot to say and I will try to keep it. I think, um, to start from a place of where parents are concerned, I understand, I wonder if it would be helpful. Uh, I appreciate not during public comment to explain to someone when a circumstance like this might occur, that a parent would be involved. Cause it, it's feeling like people are worried that in any situation where a student is at risk, there's a decision being made not to include parents and that is not at all my interpretation of the policy and I appreciate my interpretation might not be correct. Um, as an adolescent mental health professional, I listen to people and I appreciate that for many of us, right? We, we do want the best for our children and we will 100% support them. And I think we want to believe that that is true for every family and having worked with students, adolescents, not much older than our high school students at a college level. Um, I can say much of the time, they do have families that support them and are involved and that's wonderful. Um, and I've seen students either from gender identity, sexual orientation, whatever that may be over the years, where their families have disowned them. They physically abused them, they have harmed them. Um, the reason that, that that population of students is vulnerable to suicide is not because they of the gender diversity. They are vulnerable to suicide because of lack of support and discrimination. And so, um, sorry, I know I'm not being coherent. It's important that we have a policy in place because there are, my guess would be, if, if Mr. Missouri wanted to address it at some point, a very, very infrequent amount of times where a student is very worried about a family's reaction. And my guess would be, and I would hope that maybe this would be more clear in the policy, is that a mental health professional in the schools would be working with the student because it says a student is facing a challenge, which is why a school would get involved. Because if a child just wants to have a different, you know, they, they want to use they/them pronouns or they want to be called a different name, that wouldn't necessarily trigger calling a parent. Kids get called different names all the time. But we're worried about a student, right? And so they'd be working with a counselor and mental health counselors are, they are trained in assessing risk, whether it's for suicide, whether it's for harm to self or others, whether it's for eating disorders, all those issues people talk about. That is literally someone's job to do that assessment um, and make a determination. And my guess would be that 95% of the time, it's going to be, of course, the family is going to be involved if there's an issue and it's supportive. Uh, and so my take on this policy, and again, I, I might be incorrect, um, is that we want to have something in there that allows us, if we are really worried the family might be horrible, or maybe not come from a place of support, that we can protect a child. That doesn't mean they're going to not get outside help. And so I, I'm wondering if we could just maybe clarify that because there's lots of, um, there's a lots of fear mongering going on around what could happen. And I understand it as a parent, we obviously want what's best for our child, but you know, our trans students are much more likely to be the victims of abuse than to be attacking anyone in the restroom, right? But should people have private places to change for lots of reasons, regardless of gender, right? It might be their body image, it could be because of modesty, it could be because of past trauma, right? There's lots of reasons. There's lots of reasons that we make these different decisions. So I, I just I'm, I'm just feeling like maybe if there's just more clarity about a kind of circumstance where this might happen and being really clear that a mental health professional is sort of assessing that risk at home. And thinking about an alternate plan, maybe another trusted adult that might get pulled in, like that's how these things generally work. And that this is not some policy, I don't believe it to be, and obviously just an update to an existing policy anyway, where no parent is getting looped in. And then finally, and I'm short out of time, sorry, I just want to be really clear that the school is not helping a student transition. You're talking about a student wanting to use a different gender, a different gender diverse restroom or space, a different name. And supporting that is not transitioning. I don't get any sense that anyone at the school is going to start prescribing medications to students or encouraging them or whatever that fear might be. So I just, I'm just worried we're going in a really different direction than what this policy is meant to do, which is to say we want to support students, here's a support plan. The majority of the time, families will absolutely be involved because they need to be there to support their child. But we have this like clause in there in case someone really feels that that wouldn't be supportive home. And sadly, there are students in our town, as wonderful as Barrington is, who have parents who may abuse them and may neglect them. And they harm them. And, and that's just the reality. It's not many people, of course, but it happens. And so I'm sorry for being long winded. I just, I feel like we just maybe could use more education and information for the community to understand kind of these cases a little bit more, maybe a little more clarity about who's assessing. So people can feel a little more confident that this policy is in place to support our students. I thank you and I apologize for rambling.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Cynthia Rosengard. I live at 374 Soames Row Road. Like Maura, I hadn't intended to speak this evening. But because I, I kind of tuned in and have been hearing a bit of the concerns and objections that have been raised, I just want to wholeheartedly echo the things that Maura said. And to lend my support to moving forward with the changes to the policy that's already been in place. And it seems to me that the things that people are objecting to are things that have already been in the policy for the last several years without incident, I assume. The perspective that I come from is I am a clinical psychologist in private practice in Providence, Rhode Island. The bulk of my practice is working with transgender individuals from ages 13 to 83. It's not uncommon for young people to feel more comfortable speaking with peers and other trusted adults before they will talk to their parents. And it doesn't always have to be that there is a risk of abuse or negative response from families that is feared. There's, I mean, it's complex, as you might imagine, right? When people are trying to figure this out for themselves, they want to feel really solid in, in their identity before they present it to other people. And the school is a place for them to be able to explore all kinds of identities, including a, a perhaps a gender identity. So, and from my own experience, I, I'm the parent of a transgender child. They spoke to a lot of other people for her. They spoke to me and I'm really glad that they had outlets and were able to do that. And it makes me really proud to live in a town that adopted and is working towards strengthening a gender support policy. So I hope you'll stay the course and that you'll be able to affirm it next time it comes up. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you. We do have one more opportunity for public comment later on this evening. In the meantime, we will move on to the superintendent report. I'm sorry.
Compliance clarification, is the intention to vote on that policy at a later date or?
The policy is we do a first read of whatever they drafted inside that. It's an opportunity for the committee itself to ask questions. Not only follow up on what's been brought up by the public, but also to understand why the changes are made, what's happening, ask questions to the superintendent, what's going on. And we would refer back to the policy committee with edits, for more information, etc. At that time, we'll come back to this committee. So, so we still like to do our due diligence.
Okay, thanks. Just going to start by some achievement recognitions. First, I'd like to congratulate Barrington's high school football team for their Division II state win. The Eagles won the football in 2021. The Eagles ended their season with a 36-7 victory over Mount Hope. The rivalry showdown at Thanksgiving Day game. So congratulations to our football team. So I'd like to thank Barrington High School Interact Club and the Barrington Police Department, SRO. Joel for organizing this year's Palters Cops Community Toy Drive, which is now going to take place right up until almost the end of December. And last, congratulations to Barrington High School, bringing the team into history for the first time. They will compete for a national title in the Gillboat Nationals in St. Petersburg, Florida. They had a stellar fall season, finishing first overall in the New England Sailing Association. Great Oaks for God at Invitational. So congratulations to our sailors as well. And if you just keep moving, that's when I have just a quick update on the installation of the modulars at Trimrose Hill. All four units are now in place and the team is seeing together. And we're in the process right now having them prepared to have the electrical hookup, for me hookup by the end of the week, in which at that time they'll be able to turn the modules over to us, which at that point we will communications and internet service to those classrooms. The goal is for a move over during the winter break and the transition classrooms in the modular by start of January. Actually, it's kind of went in today and we'll say that they are, classrooms are pretty good stations. So they'll, they'll be afforded very good classroom space in those, in those areas. Each has a quick with their own bathroom and and they have center hallway actually, and dividing, the dividing wall is actually outdoors to join the classroom. But it also allows for collaboration at that point among the teachers. So it's, they won't be isolated. They'll actually have more opportunities to work together to say about that. The only update I have on the search also with the for the Trimrose principle is that the interview committee agreed convening next week. We have a candidate that's come forth that has the credentials for the position. So we will be in the process of doing a screening interview. I believe it's next Monday. And is a successful candidate for the day. The next step would be to invite that candidate to our administrators and then hopefully. I'm not saying this is a bad deal at all. There's a lot of process to go through, but since the search began back in early September, you know, we were fortunate enough to have a certified individual apply. We had some RFPs that came due last Friday. One of them was our school security RFP. We did have one response to both the threat assessment and to the physical security building bids. We did actually go out beyond our bid net to two other groups, which is Bid Prime and RFP School Watch, which are companies that would also help promote bids and then they would feed them back to bid net. So what it might, we'd want you back, back from the committee. If they're interested in reviewing it, I would probably recommend community input and also the security task force input as well as far as moving forward. If they're unsuccessful, then we probably would need to reconvene and talk about what our next steps will be in securing a website. Fender or opportunity to have a security being done. And we're going to discuss.
Thank you very much.
Doug, I know there was a request for a transportation update. Close to midpoint here. Doug's done some work with our transportation coordinator and service provider in order to provide some data regarding where we are this year. We did look at as a result of last meeting, our on-time buses and we were in excess of 90% across the board on all of our routes. And please to see that information. Ocean State has been very, very good partner this year. They, they implemented the tracking mechanism, perhaps your parents follow this year. And they were very responsive this past week. And we had the one distance to high school and kind of half day. So I I'm very pleased with how our relationship has evolved since some of the earlier, the early year mistakes.
Hi. Quick question. So I was at the middle, middle school this morning. But the bus got here, like they dropped the kids at eight, eight twelve, eight thirteen, eight fourteen. It was felt really early. And I was, I was here for, it was this morning, because yesterday morning, that's not happening. But I was just surprised that they were all standing outside in what was a pretty cold day because the doors don't open until eight twenty. So, yeah, so I was just curious if, I didn't think that's how it was set up. I thought it was set up to be here, to be.
Usual day, where there's a lot of riders or something.
I would almost rather have had the kids just sitting on the bus though, because it was cold and there were some kids in shorts. It just, I mean, I know that they're like So I just, that would be something I was just curious about.
Do we have a, is there a non-identical policy?
We have a non-identical policy, but they, but they could, the bus is already warm. And so it's a matter of waiting like five minutes. It's going to stay warmer than it is standing outside.
There's been a problem with the bus being here because the whole line is at the middle.
Right, I think that's the third day. It's the last one. So that's why I was that means the kids got to the high school even earlier and that school doesn't open until eighteen. So that means the kids at the high school were also standing outside. So there's something wrong with the optics about looking at schools in Barrington having kids standing outside thirty people there. Bus three, actually, because she announced that she was pulling out. They do that. Bus three is leaving. Please be aware.
Last time this was on the agenda, might be referenced that Ocean State has data collated. And I think that they're going to be forwarded to the, some sort of data as it relates to around this time.
Last week, we also have a deadline for community staff participating in the facilities committee. And I believe that closed last Monday. So we are at this point populated. We had some last minute individuals that were interested in participating. We have the members of the community, staff member, member administration. So at this point, we would be ready to look at setting a date for our first meeting. I guess, wait, it would now probably be the first mid-year. In order to set a charge for the subcommittee and then starting our work at that point. We're kind of targeting right now for later in the afternoons. Feel it that probably hopefully work time and schedule time for our staff. So we'll send out a communication to my office either tomorrow or next week. Kind of establish the dates for January and start our first meeting. And I don't do it, I don't know if you support it, but I have some, many memberships to individuals.
We did not. So it may be used to be added or you can have a silly meeting and kind of talk about what some of the potential charges would be and then bring that back because of any report or discussion. There are multiple topics, so.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important for me to be committed to have a good charge. Given from the school. I think it can be certainly open ended enough to allow facilities to leave the space to at the mid-year provide feedback. But I think it's important for any such movement to know why it was going, not its general charge. So historical guidance out there is only pull up.
We're kind of in a different place than we were when it first started, especially in the, in the light of potential school building projects. On an initiative that has come in the district since the creation of the first one. So direction to the subcommittee, but welcome to the opportunity of being able to provide the shores that they like to prevent. We do twice a year, state mandated, following reports represented to the school committee. We're at the mid-year, almost mid-year points, the central and usually divided. We were given the data chart that we actually have to shrink the graph in order to read the data. But really, out of all of our schools, we only had two investigations affiliated in a way that were not founded. And that was both at the middle school. And that's the only reports that we had in the first half of the year. They'll have to work on the graph. We had to shrink down the table and within it, there's another graph that shows a trend data over the last couple of years, the reports have come in and where we are this year. Basically what I have, our graph that's showing also by the last three year report of our schools.
The answers.
Was this in your job box? So I'm obviously showing my preparation. I apologize. Is there, is there a breakdown of for winning incidents by classification?
The team was stretched.
Okay, thank you. I think there was a point in time where the committee had described it all along. We had talked about specifically incidences related to a race. So we would have some sense as a committee taking forward what's happening in our schools. And I, I thought it was to be presented at this time. Is there, sometimes it was bothered in with the polling data.
Were you looking for that like one poodle or as far as what we experienced within, in the year?
Let's just say, you know, probably similar to this, that there was a report that someone said they were being discriminated against. That raised me with one tend to that. And that's simply to pay our attention to something so we can decide as a committee if we need the resource support.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, so picking up on this, the classification looks like physical, occasion and social interaction. Is that, is that the detail? Is that the classifications that would you be?
Is that, is that the detail? Is that the classifications that would you be?
Specifically around bullying, which has a pretty narrow definition. Which is where other forms of discrimination or other issues in the school have not, are not necessarily captured here. So. And that's where it hadn't been included. There was a breakdown by race and that was taken away because the ends were all too small. But the, but that was a separate report and I think Paula was going to be able to make that, but she's not. Because she said she got that data.
So. Um, I think, I think what we're trying to, so leveraging, can't manage, we can't manage. And I think that bullying is across all five members as a, as a priority. And I think what we're trying to tease out on the data is these are individuals in incidents where it was severe enough where there's a record of it occurring. And it's an opportunity to capture as much data, obviously protecting privacy as possible. If we see trends in terms of what the subject is, and it goes, it goes more granular than just than, than some of the traditional. But if it's on said topic. And we're noticing an uptick or a trend, it allows at this level in the school committee, if you need support, you need resources to address it. I think certainly which school it is is helpful. But, you know, you know, e- even if it's broadly under one of these title classifications, I, I. Someone has the courage or, or it's gotten severe, severe enough that they're coming forward. I think it's an opportunity to capture as much data as possible. And obviously, as I said, not to be repetitive, but to protect privacy, but I don't see much action. We can take more into the spreadsheet.
There's only an end of two, like I don't know that you could make any trend data based on two reports.
Well, that's just race, but I'm talking.
No, no, twenty three, twenty four. So the last, they, they're the only two reports of bullying this year. So to, to make any comments around trends would be a difficult thing to do because we have two reports. Then that's, so that's two people that filed reports of bullying. That doesn't mean that's only two people who have had issues with interactions with other students. Bullying again falls in this rather narrow category. And so I think what you're probably asking more is what are the things that the principals are having to interact with in the schools? In terms of providing guidance or discipline or restoring justice and that, where, what are those questions? And that would be a broader question, which I think is what Paula said she had information on, since she's our coordinator and that's all rest and so. And. I think. I think we love her adults and our students.
Again, I, I agree with Megan's logic. Thank you for walking me through that. I think ultimately we're trying to get just the help. Help where we can. So thank you, Megan.
So I think I would also go back to that data is going to show up in some ways, hopefully to the Panorama survey, which I certainly thought a lot of students think. Um, and, and to be honest, Steve, because it's, that's where we, we'll be able to kind of track things that maybe don't last.
So, so in the spreadsheet, you can track like, for instance, that high year last year, the door. It's that well related discrimination.
Right.
So how that was being addressed is that Duncan's actually tried to address the situation last year by, with students, staff, by bringing in an outside, yeah, which didn't materialize. He, he's working on it again this year. And his goal when it is is to look at addressing an issue of the culture issue that might be sometimes not just there in middle school, what we look at it in a more global sense is the district as a whole. This is a sample of some of what he deals with, you know, because it gets reported, but not that there's even some things more administrative, it's worked with students. As far as teaching and social activities and how we work together. So we just had this discussion this week actually about looking at outside vendors, it's going to be going through the D E I committee. We're doing some work in the middle school itself, especially in response to some of the staff. And I just had a meeting with E D F to kind of think the scene about what influence the district why, you know, maybe starting here in the middle school and then expanding it and we go into next year. So, you know, this data did bring some results and although not everything that's reported in the bullying report. I mean, looking at instance of what administration deal with it, it faces. There is some data that shows that there were incidents last year that rose to like a major, it had to be a bit higher. Thank you.
I think also maybe a, maybe you could give us a chance or something, just have a chart broken down by those categories. So there's fifty eight cases, there's six that are discrimination, seventeen that are discrimination.
Do you want to go back in time and do that right now though? Like I was saying, like, because going forward, we're looking at trends, right? So right now we have two cases to work off this year. If you go on the chart, if you have a spreadsheet, you can sort by title six and then you'll know those discrimination case numbers. And then if you go to, you know, like five or four, you can say, well, those may be these discrimination based on disability. So you could probably, maybe you can look back a couple of years, but you can sort by that if that's all.
Again, I think it's just, we've heard different stories. We have people talking about their experience in our schools. We have educators talking about their experience in our schools. We have data that would or may or may not support that. This committee has a difficult time obviously assessing how an individual's report versus an action versus what's happening. The data really helps us do that. So that actually, for example, didn't happen last year. In my personal opinion, I wish that's something that this committee had known about so that if it, knowing there was a problem, knowing there was an infection, and knowing there was a plan and the plan was not executed. So that that could, something could be, something could be done and that is. So I think data is a different part of it. All right, moving on. Anything else from you, Mike?
Awesome.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much. So this is our second opportunity for public comment. Just like the first time, you revealed to aggressively name it, I was in the right place, start your interview and then.
I'm gene ball five, thank you, crossing a positive, productive, doing myself, Paula's seen those up. I just want to address something that I see as a, as a dangerous false premise that's been aptly tossed around this evening. And that is that a child's questioning of their gender is being framed as a normal, healthy developmental phase that should be respected and encouraged by the school administration. And in fact, the very questioning, that very questioning is a strong signal that perhaps counseling and professional health or intervention is called for. If that's not immediately obvious to anyone who's listening, that a child questioning their gender is a sign of a problem. Then the non-subgender industrial complex propaganda has possibly clouded your judgment. The health harms that await a child who is persuaded that they are in the wrong body are profound and are aptly documented. Their physical, emotional and psychological. More and more, children who have been whisked into transition by well-meaning activists, people whose careers have been devoted to the lucrative gender change industry will suddenly dramatically come to realize, after years of development and damaging experimental off-label administration of medications designed to alter the cost of their healthy body's development, or much worse, after disfiguring surgeries, that it was all a mistake. A mistake that was seeded into their very young minds by well-meaning adults, but adults who should have known better. It is noteworthy that our two last commenters in the first session identify themselves as professionals in dealing with people undergoing gender transition. And I believe that that fact only amplifies my point. It is wrong to consider gender transition to be a normal developmental option. It is not. It is a physically damaging, painful, isolating and ultimately elusive journey that should be treated as a choice that is not a foregone conclusion. A choice that probably is not a good, healthy choice. Not that things don't go that way on a rare occasion, but the degree to which this is becoming a norm instead of a very rare exception should be really troubling to anybody who really claims to care about the well-being of children. And I hope that this committee has the sense to realize that such an unusual thing as gender questioning really needs to be brought to the attention of the child's parent so that can be dealt with as soon as possible.
Well, please, yeah, she's just going to fix the screen, so please.
Um, my name is Sophie Dunham and I'm a student at Berington High School. Um, I'm going to be completely honest with you guys. I have not fully read the policy or I've really looked at it. Um, but I just want, I felt like I should talk based, because I'm a student. Um, and just based on what I've heard from both sides today. Um, as a female athlete and what I've heard so far from the policy. Um, again, I don't really know much about the policy. Um, personally, I would find it quite uncomfortable if there was a transgender female in the same changing room as me, just because we are all in high school and a lot of the times that is a very transitional point for many male, female, non-binary or any person. That is a very transformational time in their life. And I think that just having that can be very difficult. Um, because of the certain feelings that you may be feeling at that age. Um, so personally for me, I thought I would be quite uncomfortable having a transgender female changing in the same room as me. Um, if they were kind of just like closed, not closed off, but kind of like in their own space. Um, just because of that, I personally would not want to be subjected to that. Um, and then secondly, I, um, do have friends and people in my family who are part of the LGBT community and I truly support them and I absolutely love them. Um, and I come from a very loving family and we are very open about our emotions and we talk about them um, very openly. And I understand that a lot of people don't come from that and don't have that experience. Um, but I do believe that it is important to get a child's parent involved in certain aspects of their gender questioning or whatever they may be going through, just because it is a very hard time, as I said before, for a child to be going through their teenage years. Um, I mean, I know, I know there are hard times all the time as a teenager. Um, and I personally don't know what I would be able to do without my mom or my dad to talk to. Um, and then again, I understand that a lot of students don't have that, but um, I do think that counselors are a really great option. And I do think that having a mental health professional in school would be a really good option for us to have for these people. Um, but I do think that if there is any major concern on a child's health, that the parent should get involved. Um, just for the safety of the child. Um, I know that I have a family member currently who I believe is in gender questioning. Um, and she, or she's not come out to our family yet. Um, and I have asked her about it. I have asked her about it. And I want to be as supportive as possible as her older sister. Um, and I just feel as though it would be the best kind of, if it comes to a harmful place that, or like a, a teacher or a faculty member believes that it's, it's becoming harmful and that the student is kind of starting to block themselves off and not really engage as much in that this parent might think that the student is being bullied because of what they might be going through. That, that's when the parent should get involved. But if the student seems to be very confident in themselves and very confident in their decision, then I do think that it's okay to keep it. Um, until they're ready to share with their parents, if they're being unable to ready to share with their parents. But I do think that at some point the parent should know what their child is going through. Thank you.
What else would you personally would like to address?
David Sanfester, no matter what. Can you talk back for a minute? Um, can you speak about the choice between Hampton Meadows and Soames? Was on that today, making a decision on which property. Um, as someone who grew up in that area, I have a couple of opinions on that. Um, I'm personally hoping that you guys choose some school because I think that road is actually a safer road. A lot less traffic goes down Soames than New Meadow. A lot of people using the meadows to cut through from Route Six, whether they're going to Warren or Bristol. I would hope though, that if you do choose some, that you guys obviously include sidewalks in the planning because that road is fairly black in that regard. Um, I also think Hampton Meadows would be a better swing space during the building process. And after looking at both plans for both properties that you guys presented on Tuesday, um, I think it'd be a real shame to clear the woods behind Hampton Meadows School, an area where kids play. I mean, you're basically going to be right up to the pond, pet pond. It's really going to destroy the environment and the area where, you know, a lot of people without kids also enjoy. That's about it. Thank you.
Um, Heather Ryan, ninety nine Rocky Street. Um, my comment is going to be kind of on two things to discuss today. Um, one with bullying in Berington. I think the bullying is far worse than anyone honestly knows. Um, there's a lot of bullying that goes on. Unreported. And it's because you have students whose friends say something to them. They don't want to be the person to go rat on their friend or feel like a wimp or feel less than. My child was in fifth grade when his bullying started at Hampton Meadows. I have all bullying reports still. And, um, my younger son did not feel safe going to Hampton Meadows, so he started homeschooling. He did it pretty horrible to have a child express because he saw his brother being bullied both physically, emotionally, from his shoelaces being tied to being pushed on the playground to just, you name it, it happened. And the ones being comforted are the bullies. It's not the victim, it's the bullies. And then we're wondering why kids who are being bullied don't stand up and say something. If kids who are bullying are being handed prizes like, here, spin a wheel, you get to call mom for five minutes and nothing is happening to the victim, why would they stand up if they know nothing is going to happen? Um, I have always had an open communication with my boys. They have questions. I know they can come to me. Um, and dad, I know a lot of households are not like that and I feel sad for those kids. Um, to put policies into effect for an entire community of children based on a school committee or administration, I think is dangerous. My children know they can come to me. And they know they have my support and regardless of what they choose. That kind of goes to the parental rights portion. When you dismiss parents' rights and you try to break that bond between a parent and a child, you are heading that, that child on a dangerous avenue. Say my child didn't feel comfortable coming to me and saying, hey, mom, this kid spit at me. Hey, mom, he tripped me. Who would he go to if he doesn't feel comfortable in school? And he doesn't feel comfortable coming to me and the school is saying, well, don't tell mom, don't tell dad. Where, where are they supposed to go? There are an entire population of kids who were saying, okay, well, let's lie to parents. Which what school administration finds it acceptable to lie to parents? The resources that are highlighted in this policy, one of them states, some. One of them states, some students may feel uncomfortable with a transgender student using the same. Uh, the same segregated restrooms, locker rooms and changing facility. This discomfort does not, is no reason to deny access to a transgender student. School administrators and counselor counseling staff should work with all students. All students, transgender students, fire students, state students and the rest of the population of the students. What I am seeing here is we are putting a percentage of students above the rest. We are not looking at the bigger picture. We are not taking all students into account. When we are putting these policies into effect, why should one's discomfort trump another student's discomfort? By saying a biological male is entitled to go into a biological female's restroom. Is putting that transgender student's comfort above biological female. So, reading through all of these resources, first of all, like dating back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, the statistics aren't even up to date. I would hope the school committee would actually get resources from at least the last eight, ten years. If we're going to approve a policy for all students in Berenton. But this seems like critical discrimination towards a large population of our students. By approving a policy for. A certain group and saying, well, I'm sorry your discomfort isn't valid. I think that. Many who spoke tonight on approving this policy going forward did not actually read the policy. Nor look at any of the resources given to the parents because all of the resources, I have them printed out right here, all of the resources. Are from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen. Maybe we might want to update our resources, statistics, facts. On the percentages of what's actually happening today and not from eight to ten years ago. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jackson. I'm a junior at Berenton High School. I just wanted to talk about a little bit what Heather said about bullying. I think a large amount of it does go undocumented. I myself was a case of bullying self for a year and I ended up not actually going to school about it for fear of being ostracized for talking out about it. And I think there's a common mentality in the school that a lot of people don't see and it's not your guys' fault, it's just because you guys aren't in there like we are. Um, there's like a get over it mentality, you know, you don't want to be the guy that speaks out, the one that doesn't find it funny. Because then those people aren't your friends anymore. And you see that a lot. It's not the typical. Serial typical bully of the kid that's bigger than you and he has this power over you. It's more. The people that are in social positions of power. Who necessarily are just found funny by the other kids because they're popular. And I think that's something important that needs to be looked at because I think with the cases of bullying that you guys looked at earlier. There's not enough of the the social triangle at play there with what you guys were studying. Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised on the. Okay, for that, we will move to the school committee business. I don't like that yet, I just don't remember the breath had who was who.
Yeah, I think that, so Patrick, you were up for the first one, so every, you would have to say.
Okay, so can I have a motion then to approve them?
He can ask.
I can either agree. To approve, uh, consider number one, the worship of the meeting and it's for the number sixty.
So move.
Second, all of the favor.
Aye. Well, then just around, it's TJ and Amanda.
Okay.
I don't think you have to, maybe you can just say. Number two, um, can I have a motion to approve this?
So for number two, can I have a motion to approve the meeting space? Second?
Second. It's a TJ Megan. She cannot vote.
TJ Megan, they can have a motion if they're. Second?
Second. Or is it Frasier?
Okay, you'd be being a, you'd be. Can I have a motion please to approve, consider a general, a general report?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All of the favor? And then, motion to approve the homeschool request. Then move on. Second? Favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for giving track of that. Okay, next we have the school construction updates.
Yes, we are, we are, um, we're going to have Justin in person tonight. So, I'd like to provide an update on on the school construction. Um, what's happening now is Tecton, and I'll let, I'll let Justin talk about this a little bit. Tecton is met with. On Monday of this week, it was in the high school meeting with teachers, faculty and staff. Um, today conducted similar meetings with the elementary school, teachers, faculty and staff. Um, again, um, at this stage in terms of where we are with design. Um, it's high level schematic design, so kind of where. Where constructions are going, um, things of that nature. I want to reemphasize that. As we get more and more in refining the process. Um, teachers, educators, staff, faculty. We're, we're in a little bit of a quiet period regarding the updates to this committee. Um, Tecton has a lot of work to do over the next six weeks. Um, as it starts forming together, a stage two for consideration, a stage two of the movement for consideration of that school committee. Uh, we're currently targeting, um, the February business meeting. Which I think is the February first and. So. Not that much time, especially when you're back during the holidays.
We don't take holidays.
Yeah, yeah. One, one of the, and shout out to them as they have prepared. Um, resources for us to consider. Um, the school consolidation question, they have went above and beyond and. Included. Preliminary schematic designs for both options to better answer costs about test fits for both sites. Um, as a backdrop to all of this, there is coordination with third parties, including the traffic consultant, Justin. That has gotten underway or is.
Yes, this week and next week, uh, there will be site observations as well as traffic counts at Hampton Meadows.
There will be, uh, scheduling with RIDE to talk through, some of the feedback. Um, one of the things that's interesting, an idea that I wanted to make, um, the school committee aware of is. Uh. The, the high school conceptually would decommission square footage in order to. Meet the maximum gross square footage. We're going to have conversations with RIDE and if there's workarounds around that, particularly. Um, if that's basically used for CTE programs. Um, so the thought process is if we have space, decommissioning it solely because of a. Sentence in a writing handbook, um, is there, is there a way to be strategic about that? Um, so, so we'll be coordinating with them about that. And then, um, as part of the approval of option five, there were certain writers associated with. Uh, that, that process to look at cost saving. Um, the pre-K analysis, um, the designs for the single drop lock and the fourth one is escaping me at the moment. Um, but all those are underway. So Justin, um, maybe you could provide a little bit more color, um, a couple of minutes on kind of. Uh, what your firm's doing and then you can segue into the next agenda item, um, related to the schools.
Uh, just please. Official, official, just because there's just two more things that I just wanted to say because it's time. Like, um, after we talked at this committee level about working on some kind of partnership with the town, so we have clarification on what. The intent for the school is already for the land, for the school, do you actually see? And structure, alternative draft, and on the council, look at, so they're aware and make them. Go through the process of making sure that we have a land and clarity for the community on the property. And then also. Um, earlier this week, Tuesday, this was hosted a meeting with our town counterparts to talk about. Initial conversation around scheduling, financing, understanding the flow of what's going to be happening. With regards to the project process and gather the town's requests for information. Some of the information here about tonight, the overall flow of the process, what the timing looks like, et cetera. So we're continuing to collaborate with the town. Our council counterparts, um, I believe they've asked for some form of a presentation. In January, from the building committee on what's happening. As a reminder, they, they would need to approve the stage two proposal after we do. But so us and the town council have been this signature right, so we'll continue that engagement. I believe some of it may happen online, those who are other facilities will probably see messages from.
Patrick, good morning, and I als-also at the, at the December nineteenth building committee, we've invited. Um, CAF committee to come and make a presentation and that invitation is also extended to any other subcommittees. That would like to, um, involve in the process. Uh, the building committee before that, we heard from the resilience energy committee, my good dialogue. Um, so that outreach is, is and invitations are happening.
Did you see a letter from the, that committee? Okay, sorry. Said again, I don't know.
No problem. Good evening, Justin Hopkins, Tecton Architects. With me is Jeff Wazinski. Something weird happened when Jeff turned on his video and went to me. Uh, which before it was, so trust me, uh, the guy right there in the video is that guy, Jeff. Um, so as TJ had mentioned, uh, we had two great days this week. Uh, we were all day in the high school on Tuesday, uh, talking to department heads, departments. Um, but a collection of students, uh, and then we had kind of a wrap-up roundtable with. Uh, many of the faculty towards the end of the day. Um, it was interesting, uh, it was particularly interesting hearing from students. Mainly because, uh, one of the things that is important and interesting. Is that these are students that are in a new middle school and then go to your existing high school. So it's interesting to hear some of the things that they talk about regarding breakout space. Different ways that they learn within the school and then, um, how those opportunities are different at the high school. Uh, so that was great. We also, uh, took a tour, uh, with Superintendent Mr. Fury. Uh, as well as, um. A map, uh, so we had some good time, uh, walking around the facility, poking our heads in. Different places to understand where some of the gremlins are. Uh, today, uh, we met at Soames. For a presentation and a discussion with the elementary school faculty. Um, fairly well attended, uh, I wouldn't say it was a blockbuster, uh, attendance, but a pretty good cross-section. Of elementary school faculty. Uh, so. Got a lot of interesting feedback regarding what's working, what's not. The key in both of these is we deliberately did not show any schemes because we want to hear blue sky thought. We want to hear. You know, what's working well and should be retained or kept in the future scheme. What's not working well and should be discarded in, in a future scheme. So, without putting anything in front of, uh, these folks, it's. It's easier to foster a conversation of just. If, if we're blue sky thinking, what is, what, how do we want these buildings to support the curriculums that we want to teach? So, got a lot of great feedback and as TJ mentioned, uh, traffic studies are ongoing. Uh, so we should be having that information within a couple of weeks. The reason why we're doing site observation. Site observations at the elementary schools, but traffic counts outside Hampton Meadows is because. In a, in the grade reconfiguration, we need to know what, um. Right now, we're operating differently at three elementary schools, K and pre-K, three. And all of your student body are going to Hampton Meadows, uh, four to five. So we're taking the counts from that. In order to extrapolate, uh, that added traffic at the, at the three remaining neighborhood schools. And that's not to say the Soames Hampton Meadows discussion is, um, it's not to infer anything by that. It's just we need that data from a consolidated total level of four and five, um, for Hampton Meadows.
You did remind me of one, one thing that I left out, so, um. One of the other things that's going to come back for school committee comment, given that it's very, very, as, as we go through the high school design to start. Providing guidance to the designer in terms of prioritization of certain things. Um, there's obviously going to be cost analysis, what's great about this process, this Tecton has heard. Um, and at that meeting at the, at the level, they're going to be costing stuff out. So that we can start providing guidance. The reason that's so important to have this committee's feedback is. They're, they can't draw, they can't draw the building three and four times and they, they can certainly change it, but they, they do need guidance. We can't be in a position where we get to the finish line and the priorities of this school can be not reflected in the first draft that we review. So, um, that will run, run through the school building committee, uh, and, and we'll have dollar amounts associated with certain things. Make that discussion efficient as possible.
The only thing that I'll add, TJ, is unrelated, but you're, that prompted me to remind myself to. Um, alert the school committee as we approach, uh, as, as we approach the February fifteenth deadline. There's both our work that we're going to be doing, uh, and in order to get cost estimates, order of magnitude, spaces and design. There's also some statutory, uh, resolutions that need to be done by the school committee. Things, uh, that align with any CHIPS, the Northeast Collaborative for High Performance Schools. Um, there are resolutions regarding use of energy star appliances, uh, resolutions about. A commitment to any CHIPS. Uh, so those will, those are things that we want to make sure that we target them. Um, so that we can anticipate them, uh, you acting on them.
Ready to segue to the next related one?
I think that's, I think that's all that TJ did. Incredible amount of work in education. Some of that will be back on the. The building website for the public.
Yes.
Did you get a sense of, um, did you get a sense of like priorities from the teachers at the high school or is it just kind of more of the blue sky laundry?
Um. You would be shocked to find out that storage is a high. So what we, what we, what we try and do at the start of these conversations is. Look, we're going to take care of the heating and cooling, accessibility, access control, security, fire protection, fire suppression. Uh, building systems, uh, but there, um, we heard today in the elementary schools and. A need for support spaces, resource spaces, intervention spaces that are, are currently. The areas that are not represented as well in, in the elementary schools. I mean, that's nothing that you guys don't already know. So, I think a lot of the baseline information and assumptions that this committee has had, the building committee has had are reinforced. In our conversations with faculty.
I think it's more around the high school actually, because I think the high school is where there's, um, there's like options, right? Like it's not a, it's not one straightforward plan, right? And there were a lot of questions that came up when. Holloway became a thing and everyone said, where did that come from, right? So, um, so I think the, my question is more like at the high school, did you have a sense that teachers had a priority list? Because I would, I, when I go to kind of look at this price list, I'm going to want to know. I'm, I'm not going to say, well, Megan Douglas wants this, right? Like that's not my. I'm I'm not gonna say, well, Megan Douglas wants this, right? Like, that's not my goal. I mean, I want the middle school for everybody, but I know I can't have that, so. Given that.
So um a lot of comments related to human comfort, uh you know, um heating, cooling. There are some areas of the building in a very sprawling layout that. Perform differently based on the exposure to the solar uh orientation, uh so we heard a lot about that. Obvious, uh there are some obvious repairs that need to be done with the building offload. Uh we heard a lot about the desire for connection, interdisciplinary connection between some of our. Some of the CTE pathways um and say music rooms and. Uh there there are things that are happening that are kind of interesting around the media center with the 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 TV, the video. Um classrooms. There were ideas of, you know, maybe there is some synergy between our music program and English program with respect to. To poetry or performance or podcasting, that type of stuff. Opening up additional CTE pathways, I think is also uh was expressed to us. Um you have a great kind of uh technology, uh industrial technology uh department, you have. Um some great programs there, whether or not you can leverage those or desire to leverage those into uh construction technology pathway is. So um Jeff, I don't know if there's anything else that for Justin from Tecton.
Speaking for Justin, I I think we did hear a little bit about the mix of classrooms and and capacity of classrooms, so we're gonna. Dig into that a bit more um to understand. Um there's a couple of successful programs, I believe it was the American Studies where they they grouped two classes together and. Um I did hear that 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 is well received by all that are involved in it, and if there's opportunities that could be had either within the. Existing building or through the additions to provide some flexibility in that space, um so that they can scale space. That's something that we wanna dig into a little bit more um during the schematic design and for the programming.
Did that come up in the in reference to kind of changing graduation requirements that you can? That anybody?
No.
So uh there's changing graduation requirements that you can, American Studies, for example, could be used as one course and it would not need to be at the time of two courses. It could be the time of one, so there could be more opportunity for that, for students to be able to choose things that are more interesting to them. Um and uh give them more time, right? Which is what everybody's greatest challenge is this time, right? Um which would potentially make school more interesting and exciting, because you're getting to choose kind of what you are interested in, what your passions are. Rather than having to eat um thirty-five or forty minutes of eating. So I just, I brought it up because that the idea of these mixed classrooms and the American Studies is kind of the the um. Olden child that we've always had that represents that, but the goal over the next five to ten years from an education perspective in our island is that. That's where we're going, and so having spaces that need that seems like it would be good for everybody.
I mean, we talked about this a little bit, our, even uh this will, I understand, uh visiting larger uh. Classrooms that can handle a larger number of students than than traditional, so that you can. Have like sixty students listening to ninety minutes, is that weird?
So it's not so much ninety minutes, but like I like the example of the music and English, right? Like, um and so to have an opportunity for um. A class of people who are interested in. I don't know. I'm I'm not that creative, I think you're off the top of my head, but the um, so the American Studies example, right, is um, it's it's uh, it's an ELA class. And it's a history class put together and it's co-taught, and so the times kind of flux during the week, right? So you could have um one day you might have mostly history and the next day you might have mostly ELA. But you're taught, it's a larger class, it's about forty-five kids and um and it's team taught, so you wanna have space for that. And space for a lot of group work and a lot of like breaking out and not sitting in rows. Um and I'd love to see that in the math department, right? Yeah, so kind of like, but they don't really improve, right? Especially those terrible desks, so. So anyway.
The other thing that I think was apparent was the need for um different scales of instructional space, you know, not necessarily. Getting everything in a nine hundred square foot classroom, so a concept of maybe small meeting in large spaces so that. You know, if there are resource needs or small group needs that goes or. Course that only has fifteen students in it, they can be, they won't be taking up larger infrastructure. We can have an appropriate inside space for them, so I would say that's probably the same at both the elementary level, but also important times.
That came up with the students as well, I think you'd mentioned that.
Yes.
Part of that transition from middle school, they said, we missed that. Is actually now that space where we can separate out.
And you can see that in the middle school, right? Every single ELA classroom and social studies classroom has a breakdown while. Fine to be. I'm also very excited and interested to hear what um the C F book has to say, of of all those students in our district, I think they. Just serve a lot more than they're currently getting.
Yeah, we spoke with the transition folks as well, visited the space that they're currently occupying, understand that that's a challenge as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you for the update. Um the next business item is selection of the elementary school. Um it's gonna be Hampton Meadows and so it's.
Yeah, so setting the table on why this is an agenda item is um. From stage two, we are required to submit schematic designs of of the buildings, and so when we selected option five. Uh part of that was going uh. For elementary schools, great, and um. For elementary schools, and so um we have to provide our design firm which site they're they're drawing. And so that's that's the lie behind this. Um uh the school building committee recognizing um. Um that the school committee needed context and data points to make an informed decision. Um uh charged Tecton to develop a matrix of um data points that the committee would like to. Will be interested in as you compare uh both options. Additionally, Monday of this week, there was a virtual opportunity for residents um in addition to the school buildings, regular school building committee. Meetings to um see um the majority of the presentation that that Justin's gonna run through. As well as provide uh public comments, so um though that feedback along with. The matrix that Justin and Steve's put together uh will be shared with the committee, so with that.
Thank you. Uh did it, did any of you attend uh Monday's virtual meeting?
I watched it.
Okay, so some of these. Okay, so this is, this is a a benchmarking. So this is um just kind of uh the opening stats of your buildings that we've shown at every presentation indicating. Year build, age of the building, current grade level configuration, current building area. Um current enrollment, highest enrollment in a ten year projection and what. The ride guidance uh square footage would be for if we right size the building. The key distinction is that the ride guidance is maximum uh square footage, there's no penalty for being. Under that split footage and frankly, ride often encourages us to find efficiency and economies in our runups to be under those. Areas. Um so as as TJ had mentioned, uh the option five, uh understanding that. Uh for a three elementary K, pre-K to five. Uh uh neighborhood school concept, uh the. The school zones in Hampton Meadows being in the same community should be. One of which should be uh the the one to repurpose, so it just makes sense to have nae at primrose and either zones or in these. So uh the the. We've level set for the purposes of test bidding, we've level set the projected enrollment across three. Uh pre-K to five elementary schools, so we have by and large uniformity of building size uh between everything. So just to uh to recap some of the things that we presented previously at at Soms. Um the area of the shade in the blue is the uh line of the floodplain. Uh so large site area, um pretty big buffer between uh the, from the school to. The adjacent residential neighborhoods. Uh the floodplain is the key distinguishing feature here. Uh so as we get into some of our plans, um you'll see how we try to accommodate that. Uh building vintage plan, original building nineteen sixty-two, youngest part of the building is a addition. Uh from nineteen ninety-one, so it's uh young churchy. Our current room use plan, according to the principal, what's missing, gymnasium, music classroom. Uh some dedicated resource spaces, conference meeting rooms, small group work areas. So um the area that is uh in white is the footprint of the existing. Is in in yellow is a proposed two-story addition. Blowing up a little bit, you'll see the line of the the blue lines is uh the line of the floodplain. Uh we are uh maintaining uh uh the new addition to the outside of that, there's. It it's not uncommon to have our play fields or recreation outdoor rec areas within that floodplain, it just means that we can't. Uh we have to be uh pay attention to our buildings uh to make sure that the occupiable spaces above the. So getting into the overall floor plan, uh the the, for the purposes of our test fits, we're showing two pre. K classrooms in each elementary school. We understand that that's part of the discussion. Um that that likely um those, that pre-K component may only be in one classroom or or one building. But for a test, that's a conversation that we've been defer past the test fits. Um we're just trying to prove that this can fit on on the site uh and within the overall building footprint. So the areas in light blue are K and pre-K are, the areas in blue are grade level communities. Uh areas in purple are breakout or special, so STEM are uh breakout spaces in each learning community. I could go to the larger uh floor plan. For the two-story scheme, uh we're putting our. The, we propose to put the grades four and five classrooms on the second floor, so they may be able to operate as their own upper elementary. Learning community there, and each has resource space, breakout space, um and access to some of the specials, the gymnasium. Uh being at the end of the the building uh as kind of an organizing volume there. So for Hampton Meadows, um we've actually looked at a couple of schemes, but here you'll see the the floodplain further.
So just just a fucking more side, so just an item of note, I know that the school committee. I made a priority to have building designs that have the potential for a single drop off point, so you'll notice in both plans. Uh killing at the plan uh at the bottom of the plan uh to um bring um. Parents onto the site with uh a roundabout uh for kind of uh traffic flow as well as as well as buses, so.
So, thank you TJ, that's a very important point. Um we have extended uh the parking. And the vehicular circulation space a little bit further to the west. Uh the purpose of which is to um to separate both the bus and the current pickup and drop off. As well as provide more teams based on 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 set, so. I think I just said exactly what you just said.
The other credentials, so.
And that's can, that is, that you'll see that that will be consistent and achievable in the Hampton Meadows scheme. Uh so existing site, um like you'll see the line of the floodplain further east uh on the site. Uh past the the recognized wooded area um at the school. Uh original building nineteen fifty-six, additions in the nineties, so very similar vintage. It is amazing between high school and your four elementary schools, they were all built in a twelve year period. Uh right, so between nineteen uh fifty and nineteen sixty-two, it's uh, it's not uncommon. Uh in to have that uh vintage in building. Again, room uh existing room diagram, uh for this one, for the current population, grades four. Uh and five, uh the existing classrooms are are, there are enough existing classrooms, what's missing is the gymnasium. Uh in some of our feedback that we heard today, um some of those resource needs are are clear. Uh you'll notice that most of the specials, with the exception of the music and the maker space at the end of the academic wing, a lot of. Uh specials are kind of fronted towards the front of the building, so students are walking uh quite a bit in their day to day. Um the travel between classrooms. So we took a look at two schemes uh for Hampton Meadows, uh one is a one-story scheme. Uh the distinction between the Soms property and the Hampton Meadows property is Hampton Meadows affords us the ability to have everything on one. Uh level. The drawbacks to that is they tend to be a little bit more spread out. Uh and a little bit more remote from from corner to corner of the building. So again, same same concept, uh the area in white is uh the existing building, the area in yellow. Is the addition, the distinction is we we have gotten rid of, we have demoed a portion of the end of this academic wing. Uh in order to provide a a new entrance for a gymnasium uh here off of Kent Street. We have extended the vehicular uh parent pickup and drop off travel path further east in order to. Try and support that additional queuing space uh and maintain the bus pickup and drop off at the front. It's just a larger uh larger view. So what you'll see here is in the one-story scheme, uh the classrooms more or less uh. Align with the double loaded corridor that is uh familiar there. Uh the areas in purple are some of the resource or special. Uh so the distinction between what you may see in the room use diagram versus what um we're we're showing with this floor plan. Is that we're trying to provide those breakout spaces and resource areas closer to the learning communities. Um you will notice that there's, there's quite a lot of circulation here, so uh we um. So for instance, uh they at the, at this corner of the building where my cursor is, you'll see that it's it's pretty remote. From the media center, the cafeteria, some of the other locations, so. We recognize that, starting to look at uh two-story schemes, so placing uh gym and some specials more in the middle. Uh between the two academic wings, that's a one-story uh space or at grade and providing a two-story academic wing. Uh to the southeast of uh the existing footprint, and we we chose this footprint over here in order. You know, that's the shorter run, uh a little bit closer to the rest of the building. And uh four plans, uh similar to the so, to the Soms two-story scheme, we've chosen to put. Uh grades four and five on the upper level, I do think that's an opportunity, uh as I mentioned, to to if. If there is still the desire to have that upper elementary curriculum, you know, placing them in their own learning community. Um with some personalization, with some identity, um if there's a potential there. So as we put these two sides aside, just starting with the sites, um comparable age and condition of the existing buildings. Uh those zones has a larger, a larger um acreage uh from the site, it has. Uh approximately three fewer acres of buildable area or area outside of the floodplain. It's not saying you can't build on the floodplain, you gotta. Make sure that you're above uh a certain elevation, so and that's, that's pretty apparent from the description in the layouts that we had shown. As we start to look that at them side by side, um some of the the, so. Same grade level configuration, same uh total student population, for the purposes of this exercise. We've level set the square footage, um it. Hampton Meadows is a bigger building, uh so there is a lower percentage of new construction that's. So there is a lower percentage of new construction that's required there. We still think that both project costs are comparable based on what we will then need to put into Hampton Meadow into the renovated portions. Both are. The distinction at Soames is two building floor levels required in order to fit the program. You have the option at Hampton Meadows, it's not to say that one's better than the other. Tend to appreciate the 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 level change to afford that that learning community separation. Both phases of construction for both properties are likely three to four phases. And the concept that would be at both properties is you build the addition first so that you create swing space at the property. That you can then move students in while you renovate other portions of the property. I mentioned this at our elementary school meeting today, earlier today. It's not like you're going to move the kids on a Wednesday when you finish construction. You target either the holiday break, a semester break or a summer break as a threshold for when we'll do it. In fact, I we just had a project in Sims Berry. Sims Berry, Connecticut, where the principal photographed the students moving from their existing classrooms. They were all responsible for bringing their own chair to their new classroom. There was a nice, nice video, he put he put some music to it, so. In all of these phase renovations, it's important to engage the students and the faculty to make it to make it be part of the exciting experience for them. So, let's see, no need for modulars. We are demolishing a portion of Hampton Meadows in the scheme in order, it's a tremendously long. Double loaded corridor that that is on the north wing. So in order to facilitate some of the the gymnasium. Construction, we are demolishing a portion of the end of it. And as we said, higher percentage of new construction at Soames than Hampton Meadows, approximately thirteen thousand square feet. Total classrooms for both level set in both schemes, thirty-two classrooms. That I think that may be the last, yeah, that's the last slide, so I can park it there, answering questions, guarantee that.
Justin, how many students are at Hampton Meadows now? I know it's, I think it's on the first, or eighty-five, or forty-five, I think.
I have a more general question that. Why decommission seems like a very strong final word. Is it required that we decommission now or is it just that we need to give you guidance about which school to choose to go forward with? Because it seems like decommissioning takes away options.
Great question, since a better answer to your question, better, different work could be.
So I would just like to propose that when we do make a motion, that would be used in the table, maybe a different one, decommission fixes, I just.
As we're talking. Yeah.
I I I think your motion should be which school to develop.
Like I would, I would make a motion to maybe work with, yeah, yeah.
Because the conversation of what to do with that property, whether it, you know.
It may still be school-based, right? Like we need, we need places for lots of things in the schools that we may not have space for. Yeah, okay, thank you for clarifying.
I have a question about the green space behind, so it looks like you're not touching the green space. And so the green space in Hampton, one of the proposals would be going away completely, how much of it?
I'll I'll say, I'll say this, one once we. So first of all, this this site layout is the same for both schemes, mainly because we ran out of time to develop a unique site scheme here. For us, the critical aspect was proving that from a site circulation for buses and parking. And parent pickup and drop off, the site works. It's a little bit more compact on Soames, a little bit more focused on the entries. Whereas you're kind of, you know, this this area can move up or down these areas. Personally, I think maybe some of these place games should go closer to the building in this in this scheme as well as the the ball field. So. Whether or not we go all the way over in this scheme to the east or or the southeast is something that we can develop.
Do we do we have to have a baseball field, like is it, is that?
No, we don't need to have a baseball field.
I I think that, I know that we need athletic fields in our town, but the idea of cutting down the freeway to make a baseball field seems unappealing.
We're we're, we're working in another district where we purposely take in field lines off of our multipurpose field. Because we had the the regional soccer club show up and ask for six soccer fields on our elementary school.
Wow, six.
Very.
It's a lot of space.
It's an award, yeah, they're champions, so.
I I'm having a hard time kind of like seeing the space, so. The Hampton Meadows has four eighty-five, we're looking at maybe having slightly over five hundred kids in each school. So the playground space at Hampton Meadows already seems, especially when you have all two hundred and eighty. Although I guess they split that, right? It just seems crowded already, so is there, is this space comparable to what's there or is it significantly? Is it or is it just the same or?
Well, with so in K or pre-K to five school, you have. Different age appropriate place games. So each each school will have the same the same number of place games, the same distinction between. The young kids, the early elementary and the upper elementary. So what what that ultimately manifests itself in, I think, is another discussion that we can have. We just want to make sure that we're, we have this space available and we, more importantly, budget the appropriate dollars for those.
Megan's question, outside of the place games. Square footage of call it open field, produce a physical education model thing. Certainly, the goal in both is whatever test fit is to make those possible, but that would require a further. That clearance at Ken Pond.
And that's something that we did hear, we did hear in the public comment, I think you may have heard it tonight, in in public comment. This, in order to facilitate this, we do need to get into that now. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can try and limit that as best we can.
Or incorporate it, right, like maybe Hampton Meadows is something they want to put in their classroom and things like that, so it'd be nice to skip there with some way to incorporate that, yeah.
How do you do, like, one of my questions about the site choice comes down to how the process unfolds. I think I. It's so hard to compare, but Soames seems much more open to me. If you said, hey, there's six trucks showing up and they've got to park somewhere, they're going to work on the site with turning in and. I may, I could see where that may go on Hampton Meadows, unless you're parking on top of the school parking lot. Or the forest, and I just don't understand how, like, how would the site work unfold in a property, like, you can't drive, can you drive a truck down the side there where the?
You would, you would, you would likely create a temporary access point. If, for instance, if you were building, if you were building the act, the new academic wing two-story. You would, you would likely need to provide some temporary access out here to it, because you you want to separate contractor. And access to the site from faculty, parents and students. So in in both schemes, you'll need to bifurcate the site in a manner that you have fully separate entrances.
There's been a lot of talk about the safety, and I don't know where it came from, but safety of having like a one. Front entrance as opposed to the corner entrance, is there, is there safety differentials between the corner versus the the single street entrance?
From an administrative perspective, yes, you'd rather have visibility on from your admin area of. All points of entry to the site, you would overcome that as a technological solution with cameras, et cetera. But in terms of approach to the building from parking areas and. It's ideal if if both. Your parking areas are approaching the building in this in similar way. A bit of a challenge on these sites to do that, but.
And. Obviously, as you, as we asked our professionals to look at it and make sure, so hope was that there would be. What are differentials that would. Assist us. A lot of the metrics, cost, usability are the same. Some of the things therefore that you don't have the next wrong down in terms of how to make a decision. While we can, you know, while we do not have, well, the traffic consultants are engaged. There's really no way to do this site unless it, unless there's. Utilization kind of can't move that all. Corner. So that's just, there's just nothing, there's no way around it. The, as Justin said, you know, the the trees and the green space. Even if it is eventually returned to either a natural state or an outside use, they they will need to be cleared for construction. And the other thing that struck me is given it is is, given the site. The narrow and tight nature of the Hampton Meadows site, it is, it's a very elongated building. And that is not an ideal design, even in the two-story concept that of a, you know, of a. Shoehorned design. There there are larger points from one end of the building and and lack of a more clearly defined center of gravity, for lack of a better word. And then the last thing that stood out to me was because of the quirks of the site and the cost. Yeah, from a total project cost perspective, they're the same, but you end up with substantially more. New instructions for footage in the Soames option. At high level, I think, I think it's a toss-up, but those are the, those are the things that we look the next wrong down. In terms of picking out what potential differences could be.
Yes, and also throw out, because it came up at the middle school a lot, was the where the multiple stories are, right? So I I don't love the idea of a two-story building on Soames, it just seems big to me. I know maybe it won't seem as big in your life, but whereas at the Hampton Meadows, when you put this second story on, it's kind of. Kind, so like the streetscape is. I I envision that as slightly kind of just easier on the eye and less thick. So that would have been one of the things that I have thought about.
I don't know about to the the mayor, you know, where the property drops off. Second story. One, my data question, you mentioned that when we needed the drop off. It's like at the middle of the buses that they're double stacked right there, right?
And yeah, no, you don't.
They're double stacked, yes, okay.
Right out to the road.
So, right, so this doesn't necessarily, we still have that same issue where kids are crossing.
And I just.
And do you still do the drive, like the parent pickup lines up along?
On Kent Street, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, whichever whichever site you you decide, I I I really want you to consider and know that. You know, on a on a warm day, we have over two hundred kids riding bikes to school. And it's not ideal where it is now. If we move that to Soames, it might be better, it might be worse, it might be the same, but just know that you're going to have two hundred to two hundred and fifty kids riding a bike every day. Which has been a challenge for us to keep those kids safe, so whichever way you decide, that to me is the number one. You know, make sure that those kids are safe, I know we talked about traffic and I think instantaneous, we're thinking the automobile traffic. But the bike traffic is a real, you know, challenge one.
You have half of your students.
Yeah, they come from all over.
All of them, yeah, they leave money.
Yeah, on a cold day, you might have a hundred, on a warm day, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five people.
It's it's.
The plus side is it's it's right, like right now, I would say it's safer to get to Hampton Meadows on a bike than it would be to get to Soames, because Soames doesn't have, there's no sidewalk, right? Except for right in front of the school.
Well, go to.
On one side, Francis, that's on the other, yeah.
Goes to country.
And and the sidewalks in and of themselves doesn't necessarily make it safe, because there are portions of the sidewalks that telephone poles right in the middle of the. And on and on trash day, we'd have to ask the residents to make sure the trash cans are on the property, not sidewalks. Either case is going to be a challenge, I just want the committee to keep that in mind with the.
Well, that's one, one, one thing that is interesting about Soames is you do have the. The legacy connectivity to Briarwood, so as you leverage, as we have dollars, right? There's there's the ability to leverage improving that connectivity to then activate both that neighborhood, which again. What we're doing is we're going to K through five, so from the the K through, the the fifth grader that rides from the mayor's promos area now is no longer. Riding their bike to Hampton Meadows, so that's a big part of it. But I think what is interesting, the genius point is fourth and fifth graders are going to ride their bike. Just it's 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 critical and I'm glad that the town now has a. Bicycle pedestrian subcommittee at the town level. But that is an interesting thing, is we have dollars to look to holistically to the site. To improve that connectivity Briarwood and therefore we may leverage the current infrastructure on the Meadow.
I don't know what you're talking about, I don't know what.
So there there is, there's a, there's a paved road, so could you go to the satellite? So if you see, so on Soames right here. So it's not, it's not on here, but maybe go to the where they have the topography lines. So if you see, so this is Soames. So there's a, so this is, this is Russwood Drive in Briarwood, there's a paved road that leads right here. Along the ball field, all along the ball fields. It's got to be forty-fifty, there is all the kids asphalt, it's not in good condition. Under certain age that dollars were invested in and you could have, you could have bicycles built to a very quiet or dense neighborhood and enter the site. And the point being, you can leverage the infrastructure on the Meadow with wider, safer sidewalks. People do use that.
Yeah, they definitely, they definitely.
Yeah, they use the, and they use the greenway to get to Hampton Meadows, all the kitchen, they have, right.
And that's even, even taking a step further, the greenway is pretty significant up until you get to Ken Pond, then from Ken Pond to Soames. It's kind of snaggy, there is a situation where you activate even more connectivity. And if you have off the Meadow and activate the greenway. All options to consider.
You're supposed to be like clearly.
Yeah.
I wish it were more obvious, but we're just too good at fitting those.
Justin shaking his head on the camera.
Jeff is, yeah.
Rec- recognizing now. It's it's decisions being made, it's not glittering. Box on on the scene, are we ready to have a vote, is there, should we try to? Get a consensus first, I I definitely agree with what Megan said in terms of future quarter has investment in one. And our vote should not be commenting on equal machine, but just thoughts of of the committee on that.
When I was looking at it earlier, I was leaning towards the two-story Hampton Meadows. So I feel like it. Even even though the the acreage is slower, the actual useful space is still bigger. And it seems like in the future, should we need to increase the size of the school, we have more options at Hampton Meadows than we do at Soames. So kind of trying that twenty, thirty year way. I I don't, I don't like this single one, and it already feels like a long time to walk from one side of Hampton Meadows to the other. So that just looks like a really long walk, I mean, walking is good, but it just seems like a really long walk, but. The two-story one is going to stay, but again, really, right?
I didn't love the idea of. Part only part of Soames being a two-story, it feels a little disjointed to me. I like the idea of a two-story Hampton Meadows. Mostly because it preserves some of that green space and if there's a, in the future, we need to expand, we have that extra space. And already, when you walk through Hampton Meadows, it feels kind of disjointed, so I'm really adding even more to that. I don't know, I don't know how, what kind of magic could be working there, but already it feels like a lot. I have a hard time envisioning. For either one, how this drop off and pickup is going to look, because I live in that neighborhood, so I know what it currently looks like, so my brain has a hard time. And honestly, none of the schools have a good system, if I'm being completely honest, none of them do. Even this new beautiful school, if you do drop off here, everybody knows it's not here, so I don't even know if that's a problem we could one hundred percent solve. I love the idea of aiming for it, but.
So I don't even know if that's a problem we could one hundred percent solve, I love the idea of aiming for it, but even here is pretty awful. I don't know, I thought I was gonna come in here and be one hundred percent sure on what I looked at, but now I'm like, I don't know. Thought you were gonna make it a lot easier.
Do you guys have anything strong there?
Why, so I.
I look at a lot longer than.
Well, it's it's kind of more broken.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think for me, the um not being a resident, I'll be just like, to you, I it's with that lens of mine, to like not not knowing what these have looked like for the different buildings, like, you know, I don't know what the people in Hampton Meadows would feel like with a two-story building behind the tree that used to be a part look-alikes for them. For me, the differentiators for um off of New Meadow, like moving the, moving the flow of people off of New Meadow for their cars. And the idea that at least math-wise, in the way that there is the flood, like that that Sohns is a much bigger property, that um there was room to either, like I was thinking, as I mentioned earlier, the construction trucks, but if they needed to extend the drop-off, or needed to change those, it could be flexible with that site in terms of the work we're doing, or is it Hampton Meadows, just because we're bordered right there by two streets? We just, we can, we only have one direction, we got houses, street, and street. We can only roll back into the, into the new space.
Now, point Joe, your team has sat through close to three hours of committee time, and maybe you can, uh Justin's done a great presentation in terms of design, but maybe you could provide a little color on actually um ensuring the layout, pulling this off, Patrick's point.
So I think that, I think that's Demo that's on.
It is Demo, I'm uh I'm showing as Joe, because I got the um invite from Joe, um so I just wanted to clarify that, sorry.
No problem. The question was, uh question was um we've been focusing on end result and design, there there is uh the construction aspect of it, could you opine a little bit on how the site's layout from the construction mobilization layout perspective?
Yeah, I mean, so um, you know, just to be transparent, I'm, you know, recently on with the team, and I'm just taking a lot of this in and filling in for Joe right now. Um so I don't want to speak on this uh too much, um you know, I'll report back to Joe and maybe um, you know, give you more feedback here. I just wanted to take this in, um you know, kind of observe here and uh, you know, go back to Joe and 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 download for a minute.
That's fair, okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, having like Amanda from a part of my life in this area, I I don't, I don't see I don't see how Kent Street and New Meadow Road is a good situation. And for me, uh I share, I I think I agree fully that if you're only using the designs, I would rather have the two stories behind the building, so I kind of agree with Megan on that, but I but I do think zooming out and and send and getting, what's the percentage on a square foot more, square footage of new?
Uh over half, half.
Yeah.
Yeah, over, over half of the Sohns square footage will be new square footage.
Yeah, so when you're looking at the net result for the students in the space, um find a hard time from a futureary expect- uh perspective walking away from substantially more newer square footage. That's where I, so I I I kind of came down at Sohns. But I was really hoping that uh the side-by-side would provide learning guidance, I think it's, I think you have to go the next run considerations.
Somebody had brought up the uh the idea of like the density of the of the areas versus where students live, and which one is actually more central. Um do we have anything like that? I I they were, they were guessing, right? Like they were saying, like, if you look at the area that would be the feeder for this elementary school, most of the kids live within da-da-da-da-da. Because like I'm thinking of like the area, like Middlebrook, right, that is pretty densely populated, with its families, and then out towards Martin, like they're just um but as you go further north on the peninsula, it actually is, it's more likely, I believe. So like is it, as far as a central, because that affects transportation, right? Like if you have more kids that can walk or ride their bike a short distance, then you actually have less of the transportation.
And one thing also, I think part of our transportation disaster that's currently there is where Hampton Meadows is, people are trying to get to Sohns, have to get through Hampton Meadows traffic, which compounds the Hampton Meadows traffic. So I think that would be mediated, because people will be going to one location versus fighting to get to two spots within ten minutes, right? Especially for those families who drop off kids in both. You've never been in that traffic, you know?
Oh, yeah.
And then I also, when I'm thinking of drop-off, I can see traffic coming from both directions on New Meadow versus on Sohns, most of the traffic comes, I don't know, I know it's southeast-west, so whatever uh whatever that way is, that um would there be a, you know, would people come around the other way, I'm not sure, that, and then I think of like, taking that bike coming around that curve is like a down trap. It really is not safe.
Of the north of the school?
North of the school.
Where the signs are and they get good.
Is.
It's semi-regular basis.
Is pretty scary. So that's just something, something else to consider.
Okay, clearly, we need to, we need to make a decision as quick as we can, right, so that these guys can get their work done. I know, the density thing is kind of been just where the kids are, because that actually is potentially cost-saving based on expectation, but it would be, it's more important.
Yeah, I don't, to me, that's not as not as critical, but maybe you go to your, I mean, the challenge we're managing is that, because of all the major criteria are relatively equal, or making a decision on two buildings based on really, really small criteria, they would never really be that big, you know?
Right, but Luke, it like, that's one of the others?
Yes.
And that's residential.
Right, right.
That's Sohns, right?
That's somebody who brought up in that area, walking distance between New Meadow, Hampton Meadows and Sohns, you would use the neighborhood, you would go down ten and then Sohns, that would be.
Yeah, I was just looking, I was trying to see, what's the walking distance?
The actual walking distance is extremely low.
Yeah, that, Dave, thank you, but I've run out, uh it's a good public comment, but yeah, that, but I'll pick up on it, and that's, and that's why I was saying the connectivity through Briarwood. You have people going through the neighborhood, and as the crow flies, if you're a kid on a bike going from the front door of Hampton Meadows to Sohns, you come through that neighborhood, and you come through the woods, and it's very close. But um we have a lot of agenda, um if there's.
I have a question, so if we decide on Hampton Meadows, do we have to decide on the one versus two stories tonight, or we just have to decide on site location?
I think that, not speaking, not speaking about, I think there's a consensus that if we went Hampton Meadows, we'd go a two-story. But yes, but I think.
I was just.
I remember, but I would, if I went Hampton Meadows, I would support that. Well, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll go. At least open the official motion, I make a motion to invest in um a paid divide at the Sohns site.
I don't look at for central location, and I know the neighborhood is, but I'm thinking of kids out on the park. But the flip side is, I agree with the idea of we're gonna invest, I'd like to invest in more in new construction and renovation, so.
Let the future make the call, uh what we're asking.
Yeah.
We don't have. Yeah, I'm just having a hard time with the one story, or half the building, and the two-story for the other half.
So you guys are in discussion, sorry.
No.
Like, uh, because you, because like, remember the mayor, which was from maybe at home, so maybe part of it would be two-story, it helps that mayor is like on two different perspectives. But like even at this school, where most of the building is single-story, and then you have a three-story, the way that it's built and kind of maneuvered in, it doesn't look like a mountain. But people were literally like, it's gonna look like Everest, and the gold town, everybody's gonna hate it, um and it doesn't, it looks fun, right, like, right? Um so I think it seems big, and it is, does look new a little bit, but I don't think it will look, I I think you'd rather clever enough with your architecture skills to make it look natural.
So four, five would be on the second floor.
Classroom, classroom learning communities would be on the second floor, our recommendation at this point is that you put your your upper elementary there. Is it, I mean, you guys are technically in discussion in yourself, is it okay? You're good?
That's right, yeah, right.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, one of the ways that we've tried to accommodate this is we provided a social stair or a learning stair, which is ostensibly a two-story space where we have tiered seating going up. It's an opportunity for a class to sit out there and have have a presentation here. There's also a two-story space that's the media center here, so what we're trying to do is vertically integrate the upper level with the lower level um so that it doesn't feel as vertically isolated, so it's not like floor, floor, there's going to be some some dynamic qualities of between the two floors with the use of double-height spaces, as well as, you know, this social stair uh will be the primary community standing stair that the kids will go up. So it's not gonna be like they go to a stairwell to go, although we will have egress stairs there. But in terms of the openness of and the connection to the main level, in any scheme that we have a two-story scheme, it's vitally important that the kids feel like they're connected to the rest of the school. So we have a couple of architectural tricks up our sleeve to to do that, that's one, or that's two of them, I should say.
The only question I have, you've done that in most schools, is that four or five, um my understanding have been um that the curriculum sets, and maybe the principals can help me here, but is that the third floor of the fifth grades are kind of?
Yeah.
One set, and then like, okay, right, so I don't know if that's taken into consideration. It's like, but the the third grade's close, basically, or like right underneath?
Can can be anywhere, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the, what we've tried to do is provide five classroom learning communities that all have their own, that can be standalone um for if one grade is testing at a time, um you know, we have that ability to, so that each learning community has their small group spaces, their resource spaces. Um not to say that there's independent resource spaces in each learning community, but at least provide that space available closer to the classrooms. So it would be the same thing on the upper level as the lower.
I know, really.
Okay.
Choosing the color of, it's choosing the color of white paint in the kitchen, you know, egg or.
Small store.
Is it right, I'm equally excited about.
I think the, um even though there's less buildable space on Sohns, it does feel more open than Hampton Meadows, which is like a plus for like the student's experience and how it'll feel. I don't know, this round. Let's hold it up.
We'll go out this one. The best of the Sohns, probably.
But I'll go with Sohns because of the new construction.
That's why I'm going with it.
And we're sure that the other, the un-new or vintage, I like the word vintage, the vintage part of the building won't feel as new as the new.
That's the second time that I've heard that question today, uh you'll be happy to know that your your faculty has also asked that question. So the the benefit of your existing spaces within, the short answer is yes. I'll just stop this.
Good. Do we go, or no, I don't know.
No, you can really, but it's important, but I need to, like, for real.
We've had a, we've had a second, so.
Just say all.
I'll say, all in favor of investing in the Sohns.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you very much.
I mean, that's a very long day, meeting with our staffs, uh thank you for being here in person, it was important.
Can I just say one comment, please?
Yeah.
I know it's not public comment, I'm a, I just, I want to thank the committee for their thoughtful decision, I just want to acknowledge that the Hampton Meadows staff, where the news travel, they are gonna feel expensive loss, um they're gonna be behind this project one hundred percent. We all want this to happen as a staff, as a community, but I just, I'd even miss if I didn't acknowledge that our staffs, you know, in three, four years, their lives are gonna change, their their situations, they're gonna be dispersed, and I just want to put that on the record um that we acknowledge that, uh it's a big change, and like I said, we are behind this one hundred percent. Um and I I don't want them as people to be forgotten, this has been their whole for ten, twenty, even thirty years, for many other reasons. And it's, it will be a sad day for them when they hear this news tomorrow.
Thank you, Gina, thank you for your leadership on the school building committee, and um it's not lost, and thank you very much for your comment. Thank you, thanks, Justin.
Right, um we can do this.
I'm making a motion to remove the M G.
Well, in, oh, uh, no, I I didn't want to discuss that.
Oh, sorry, okay, Jane, then to Steve, sorry. And a motion to remove the M G.
Okay.
Can you say with a little endeavor?
Aye.
Okay, next you have the superintendent, sir, our page. Mr. Dorian, you could introduce.
Yes, thank you, and the committee's package, we think we were fortunate to have four respondents who are good, typically with these type of things, and we usually get the one in New England response, so I think going out the international did for, we were, yeah, really more in the advantage to that, as we see that the fight that we do have for our New England ones is pretty comparable, not way in one to one of the others. Um I do, I reviewed it, I do think we divided the options, so I think the committee would um their next action would be, how do we receive, would we hire any one of these, or would the committee be deciding new answer, I'd be happy to answer your question.
Like, I like to, I I like, I could go either way on some, but um I think that, I think we need to go out of New England, I like the idea of national ones, the ones that I, that I found uh that were also, that was appealing to me, was that both of them also that kind of national databases of people who may be looking for a position. And uh and I can speak negatively about it, I, the the databases were, the last one was very new, and I, that made me a little uncomfortable, because it just, they may be great, but I don't know that there's a lot of history.
It's never a graceful idea.
Thank you, guys.
I I did want to mention that our feed did have some story, I'm curious, so would we do that internally, or would the search committee do some, something?
I I would rather form the search committee with the help of this group, so um so I think that I would love to see anything, and that the faculty could then decide on, I I'm just feeling late, I feel like we almost need to make a decision sooner. Do we have, like, do we have that kind of story yet?
I wasn't sure if we wanted to do it before, if we we serve the committee, so we consider to put that together, or if you're comfortable with this.
I don't know, I would, I I I'm really nervous that we're really late, and I don't know if anybody else had a chance to read the packages.
I did, for a clear, so I I'm in agreement on the one bit, so I think, um, did, did you want to go a national and a local, or both of them, I mean, nationals?
Um, after our recent experience, I would prefer to go national. I, I know. Right? That's who we used for the VHS principal search. Yeah, I would prefer to go national.
Right. Um, I think what I, I recognize, um, I recognize the urgency for a lot of factors. Relate, um. Uh, not wanting to drag this out, but realizing how material this is for the in-house. Um, should we hear from these individuals and even making a decision based on, um, a static document, um, this is going to be pretty critical. Can't mess it up. Maybe we'll see what happens if you get the C team out of the church firm. Uh, it drags on. Um, so knowing the outcome fast, but also wanting directly, how does it feel about that balancing out? Bring, bringing it, like, like on the 21st, if we have a meeting, virtual, virtual 10, 15 minutes so we can ask questions. It, it feels like a big decision to make off, like of marketing, whatever.
But I, I agree with that.
I just, the flip side is I haven't found this interview is like particularly discriminating. Do you really, like, I, I feel like, like, for this, for other searches that we have done where they have a group of people come and speak to us. Um, with one exception, I can give, but like in general, I, like the strategic planning one. I think there was a huge difference between them. It didn't, like, that energy to bond. I, I understand that would make me a good consumer. I just am really, really, really nervous about it.
As you should.
Maybe we can be prepared to make a decision if we want, is it meaningful to go back and say one or two finalists? If there's additional material later to provide to us, we'll make our decision.
We are creative.
Um, did we know what that additional material would be?
Well, I'm trying to.
I mean, you know, I haven't been part of the strategic plan. I haven't been part of the executive search. But I can, the experience to date, I thought that the OPM, our exact energy were very wide enough. And helped, uh, to firms rise to, uh, like to process it. So, uh, but I, what I, I prefer 100% right here, fair to go, I'm down here for the way that I've already created this, um.
We don't want.
The underwriting. So, okay, so in, in your version of the, you saying we have two, two national ones?
There's two national ones. I, I read all the information. I have one that I'm kind of preferring, but, um, I'd be open to, like, I'd be curious to hear what other people have to say in relationships to those. Um, and whether we can make a decision tonight to move forward. I, I, I know that's not ideal and it feels like I'm the show that the car dealer in a car. But the flip side is, um, we did do an RFP that was actually very, very crystal clear about what we were looking for. And, um, and the data they shared, it's the, the data, are they shared? That's actually most reassuring. Like the one, there's the one that says like, based on compares to our peers, we have hired those people and they have stayed, right? Like this is right, like we don't, we don't have a whole bunch of people. You know, there was, they're going to leave after a year. Yeah, so.
I mean, who actually had warranty or warranty if they didn't stay at certain part.
Right, and there, um, I feel like I'm not mixing them up. I think the second one was the one that like stays a year and helps like with the transition. There were, so there were like little things like that, depending on which we thought was more important. But at the end of the day, I think both of those two national ones, the one out of Illinois and the one out of Nebraska, um, both reports, the first one I think is one out of, uh, Illinois was the one that actually has a, they like have their weight of, of success.
Another thing too is if we wait for the 21st, the holiday season is coming. We just have to be honest, people who take time off and it's that we was out for two weeks. And we're still pressed for time that those two weeks seem critical to me. Um, right, that's my hesitation of waiting until the 21st.
Yeah, if you look at here, that just related to that, the timing that they had and we were already having conversations two months, two weeks ago. And I was like, oh, wow, we're really, yeah.
They can build their timetable until the day it started now, so I totally support the emergency.
Yeah, me Megan, I, I, I respect your experience. I'm not going to get into why. We're not here, but, um, I think that, I think I like the national going into it, I want to, I'm not going to do the national. I think that realistically, that national firm has to improve and that they can also recruit nationally and well. It seems like if you recruit nationally, you can recruit them. Um, but I also want whichever firm we pick, um, to guide us on how we attract, um, top talent in terms of conversation package, global salary perks, et cetera. Um, Barrington shouldn't lose out anyone and, um, and so I think that's important versus just helping us, um, post a job and, and just do the headhunting thing. Um.
Yeah, that's, so both, both of them, um, yeah, both of them do that, right? Trying to find the, the actual people, because both of them provide who would be our actual contact person. One of them was Connecticut, which I had.
That's then to, you can, you can get, you know, great executives and you can get assigned the C team. So, um, part of that interview process is who exactly is going to be assigned? Does you the principal that's going to be doing this, the principal at the firm? Is it someone, someone?
No, they, they say who your person is, um, and, um, yeah, and they, actually the references for that, when I'm looking at is. I'm looking at the Nebraska one. So the references they give are Gardner, Mass, uh, two schools in Connecticut and another school in Mass.
The other listed name is there, versus not personally.
That was the main, that's the main person. Yeah, so that, that's the main person. And then the one, the one from, um, Illinois has the guy that's Connecticut, who would be our guy. And he's been in, uh, he was the guy that was principal.
Sounds like a coin flip.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading a little bit. The first part, they're so similar.
I like, if it's a coin flip, I like who, who you think has better, because yes, nationals is the, is 100%.
I think that's Hyatt.
Yeah, I.
I, I appreciate the timeline. They are concise, that is.
The other one had quite an expansive list of states that they had assisted in and I did not see that too.
Is that Hyatt?
No, we were on McPherson.
The McPherson, yeah, so McPherson gave the example of they did Gardner.
Which was weird because they didn't submit the.
Okay. Yeah, when I was going through them, Hyatt was the one that just struck me as kind of a slight tier above.
I, I'll agree.
I think if you take time and this, you know, we take time putting effort into your presentation, it goes a long way. Like those details matter.
I agree.
Um, so this is actually not the guy from the school. This is the guy from Maine. Is that, Dr. Jack Smith, the Hyatt guy with, um, and Dr. Henry Johnson, who's based in DC. Would be the two people.
I took on, and I don't want to get in my part, so. Ideally, you would have had that opportunity, but you had to be pragmatic and look backwards, right? So, there's other considerations, so, um, okay.
So.
I'll make a motion to, um, for the superintendent to.
To award the bid to.
To award the bid to H Y A.
Of Arlington Heights.
They have one time?
Of Arlington Heights.
Of Arlington Heights.
Illinois.
Illinois.
I'll second.
My eyes aren't working in my ears.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
For the favor.
Thank you.
And that, um, and I think they had a thing where they might like talk to us on the phone, um, at, at any time. Like, let's just get this going, so.
And the next item we have is the school security.
Yeah, this will be really brief. Um, uh, recognizing that, um, this, I thought the two RFPs were very well, very well written. Um, the challenge here is to combine general posting outreach. The one bid that we received back, um, in my opinion, uh, we would move forward with. So that leaves us with my recommendation as the safety committee lays on, is to, uh, reconstitute after the holidays with the safety, uh, team and to devise a, um, updated outreach plan to proactively reach out to our firms. Um, and, um, so that's what I would say about that.
Sorry, no, so no more.
So the most.
Yeah, I like the expert.
This is what we want to do. This is what happened when we did the thing now.
Okay.
Okay, I support that. So, no, just go actually take it.
Are you going to make a motion to sign it back? Or you're just going to?
Didn't need one for that. I make a motion to refer, I, I make a, I make a motion to refer the school safety RFPs back to the school safety team.
For the second?
Second.
For the favor?
Aye.
Discuss act on the PHS principal.
Yeah, for, for this one, I want to recognize that I think the district was put in a really tough position uh, with a building administrator leaving essentially where the first school started. Uh, when I look at the caliber of Jim and Melissa, um, that individual is not going to leave their community. That caliber individual, the quality, ethics, um, uh, buy into their school. Um, they're, they're not going to leave their district in December and come start a new school in March. Um, and so I think, I, my opinion, that Promrose, um, has, uh, an emphasis needs, needs to be made to get Promrose right. And based on some of the, um, scores we've received and talked about, um, one of the contributing hypotheses was, was that building administrator leadership. Because of that, I, I think recognizing, uh, and, and as Mike, you said, I think two, uh, people that were going to, you were excited to bring in to interview, literally just blanked on you. Um, so given that, I think we should be focusing on surging resources in the interim and doing the proper principal search so that top shelf, um, can apply for this position. And that's really going to only happen with the September start. So that, that's what I have to say about that.
Uh, could be, but the, but, yeah, so the candidate you have, is that someone who would like come in right away? Or is that someone who's looking at next year? And are they coming from another school?
I can't see.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I, I think, I, I think the idea of not looking at them simply because it's the middle of the year is, is, is closing a door where we potentially could have.
That's right.
So I think that that person should be with it. If they're a star, then we bring them in because I don't care, right? But the, but if they're not, then we don't, because that's what we've been doing for a while.
Definitely not to go back to, um, PJ said, if we utilize all of our certain sources in the district, but focus on our school.
Right.
And then probably the best time to live is this spring.
I totally agree with that. And, um, we shouldn't, we shouldn't exclude anyone. Um, I think there has to be a pretty interesting, compelling story, which maybe there is, unless they're not working somewhere.
It'll, it'll come to us.
Yeah, so like I, I, you guys know how to find a good principal, a good principal. So if you, if it's a good principal, that's great. If it's not a good principal, then.
We'll, we'll, I got information.
Okay.
Okay, then we start. Okay.
Okay, so update.
Well, it just seems like we should, though, I mean, we should still be throwing everything about at that school. Yeah. Yeah.
All my resources.
Like, these are not on either board.
Yeah.
No, I have many administrators that are giving, I have, implementing instructional changes and supporting. Yeah, yes, I do.
Yeah.
We're fortunate to have, um, pair of presidents, uh, want to make an anonymous donation to pay off student balances for school lunch. Um, they had a positive experience with Promose, and they've asked that the donation be earmarked for Promose. And, uh, in conjunction with the school committee policy, we're asking that you approve the donation.
I make a motion to approve the donation to the school. Support a school lunch perhaps at the.
My second, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, this actually came up on Facebook. It was a big deal. People were, and then a lot of people wanted to help. So don't be surprised if you get a whole bunch of more calls. And you, and you may, it may be something where there needs to be a system for that. I know that Bristol weren't trying to have a system that didn't work very well, um, but it would be great to. A lot of people were.
Yeah, I agree, gentlemen, so hopefully we have a couple of commissions. I will send a thank you note to the, he's in really low, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, um, extra thank you because I think it's egregious that in this country you even have to do this. Um, he's just going to put that up there, but so thank you to the kind people who were, uh, in short pieces of that. Such to religious, everybody else is.
Go on to the first reading of the.
Non-union, it should be non-union employees benefits policy. Do you want a quick slide?
Uh, yes.
Yes, so, uh, last spring, we had realized that there were people who didn't have contracts. Um, and so there, uh, that went back to policy and Brian, he went to policy to talk about what we would need to do to move forward and get everybody in this district that they're non-union, um, to have, um, the contract. And the way that we had set it up with the administrators, um, was that the administrator, um, contract references the benefits policy. So this would be the same thing where non-union, um, employees would have a contract and it would reference the non-union employees benefits policy. Uh, and if there were exceptions to any of those things, that was what you know, in the contract. Um, but that we would have a base starting with this. Okay, so that's, I guess, I'm going to streamline it and get all of the, so that at, at the, by the end of the year, like I was saying, um, everybody in the district who works in the district will have a contract. Brian is working for this.
Okay.
So he wrote this based off of the administrator, um, the end of policy. So there are some adjustments, um, but most of it's meant to tie it to the best and, um, NDA. No, I need to, actually, Megan, it's summed up properly. It's, that's, you know, this is.
When we, when we have a back, just maybe some, like it says, non-certified, non-union, non-union, non-certified, and just non-union.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it needs to be, the title needs to be updated. Yeah. Running.
Excellent. Really grateful for Ryan streamlining all of this. Um, so, send the practice edits and we'll see you for a second.
In the title, just. I think it's the, in the office, it's the change, like the, the name of the.
Okay.
Administrator's benefits policy, I, that was just to update certain things like GNT and, um.
Okay.
Was there, there's red ones? There were just a couple of things that, um, that were updated to be consistent with the teacher's contract.
So you know about that one?
Yeah, I do.
Although she's mine.
Yeah. Did we have that? Like, I think it's called, Mrs. Changes.
There was, there were like three. There it is.
At table, they're all the same days, right?
Yeah. Um, we added GNT. GNT kind of.
Thought I could see the girl consistently persisting.
But we had created, if you remember, we had created a separate policy, um, so that it's not referenced. The other part was taken out. So that just.
Okay.
Breathe meant was just to expand who was covered under group funding to be consistent.
Okay.
With teacher.
Have a quick comment on that. The, the wording as it stands wouldn't allow us to make, um, co-pay changes in the policy. So I'd probably make, make some flexibility.
Okay.
Because it says as stands now in the summary plan description.
So that's what he pulled, he just pulled the summary. So if you wanna, maybe, maybe then that's something we need to edit for the next time. Is that true also in that, at the other one? So then if, um, if you and Brian could get staff for the next one, then.
Okay, keep going, not do the, thank you. To specify it's.
It's just during the, the time period where you don't get to keep playing chess.
Now it's in.
Yeah. Not just update.
How much insurance is not writing to this policy instead of the CBA? Okay, so then, we'll send that back for your.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, next we have, uh, discussion on the first read of the gender support policy. Which is on the gender.
So to clarify on that one, we've had a transgender policy, or sorry, transgender protocol since nineteen sixteen. Sorry, nineteen fifteen, oh my god. Do you really want me to talk to you anymore? Twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, I do not recall. It went through a very long, um, process in, um, camp, in health and wellness, where many families were engaged in the process. It was an iterative process over many months, um, and they came to the call, the protocol. The protocol has been in use successfully since then, uh, with some minor revisions, but because it's protocol, those haven't always come back to school committee. Uh, it was felt at policy committee. Um, Paula had pointed out, there were things that we needed to update, which is what you see updated here. Um, and then it was given to, uh, our legal counsel to make sure that it is compliant with all of the newest laws and guidance. And then, um, uh, we made a decision. So what you're looking at right now is actually protocol. So if you look at the top, the policy is actually a paragraph. We go way back to the top. That's the protocol. So there's the policy, the purpose is the policy. So policy is purpose and then protocols is everything that needs up. Um, and the rationale is the same as used for the inclusion policy was that this is our statement of why. And then the details might need to be changed as time goes on, but the details are in the protocols. Um, but there's no significant change in the protocols with one exception, um, was that, uh, TJ, um, rightfully was that, um, to, to address some of the concerns that we're trying to play it earlier, um, these kids are talking to multiple trusted adults. They are engaged with multiple adults, but the decision right now to not to discuss with the family was stopping kind of at the principal level. So this way, um, if, if that should happen, which doesn't happen very often, but if that should happen, um, then that would be go up to the level of the superintendent. But again, the superintendent is not making the decision. He's, he's supporting the decisions and the work of the people who have been working with the child throughout. Um, but that the majority, vast majority of these children are engaged with their parents and working with their parents, um, because that's what's encouraged. Um. So just on the legal piece, I know it came up in public comment, like, why are we not looking at newer, um, guidance? And that is because at our state level, the guidance has not changed in business in guidance since two thousand sixteen. So it's similar to like a law was put into place, for example, in, you know, two thousand sixteen, and it hasn't changed in that time. This is the, the legal guidance that we have to provide, and it hasn't changed in that time. That's why we're still citing that law. The, the federal law has been updated, um, and there's guidance now that Title IX is covered, that gender identity distribution is covered on our Title IX. But locally, like, the reason why we're still citing that two thousand sixteen guidance is because that is the most dated guidance that we have at the state level. Um, I just, just to address one of the other concerns that kept coming up is that the school would somehow help the child through the entire, uh, transitioning program. That the school does not have any, um, guardianship or any rights to do any of that. And no, no teacher or, or, um, school counselor or administrator is going to be taking a child to a position. That's not the goal of the school, um, employee. So that, if, if a child chose to do that, that would be through their pediatrician, and then they could make a decision about involving.
So, um. First off, I think I, um, I think that's an important policy. I think that if you put yourself in the shoes of a student that, um, had, that, that was going through this and was in a family circumstance where they truly, um, were, were unsupported to the point where, you know, you're talking to, you know, abuse. Severe abuse that relates to this. I mean, I think if you put yourself in the, in the shoes of that child. Um, I, I do think that, um, and then the guidance, um, from state is that, um, there's, there's a protocol that's put in place to protect that child. And ultimately, that's one of our greatest responsibilities as, as school committee. Um, I do think that, I, I do think that there could be some better defined terms. Um, so I think the spirit of this, um, like I said, I champion the spirit of it. Uh, I think that when you, when, when you use words like just risks and you don't define risks, a risk, there's a broad perspective of risk. Is it one person's view that, um, like where on the spectrum that is, is a risk? And where on the spectrum are safety concerns? My definition of the safety concern could be very different from someone else's. I think that the concern that you're in from the community is because these key terms are not defined and a little ambiguous. I think that certainly the policy should not, um, look to create a catch-all definition from every circumstance. Because that would not be practical, which should certainly provide, in my opinion, guidance on generally what we talk about. When we talk about risks and safety concerns that elevate non-parental involvement. So that's very serious then. So, and then the other part of it is, I understand that we have policies and protocols. And the main reason we have two is because protocols are subject to change. Um, maybe I misinterpreted how this was set up, especially since it was presented in the document. But given the order of magnitude, some of these things, especially with my comments, that there should be some defined terms at the policy level. I, recognizing that things change, this is a significant, um, very significant, uh, topic. And I think that, um, I think that the guidance around protecting, uh, like I said, a vulnerable student in that unfortunate circumstance needs to be there. But it also, in protocol, can be subject to change below the school committee level. Um, I would not be supportive of that language living in a protocol and having that flexibility we extend to field trips. Uh, you know, financial budgeting. Um, so I think the spirit of this document, I, I don't, I don't see any substantial changes. I see defined terms around risks, safety concerns, and counselors. So we know, the public knows what, what, what we're talking about when we say those things. Because I think there's a disconnect between some of the concern and the intent. Um, and I do feel that either all of the protocols are, are the ones that, um, are more of public interest should be pulled into the policy. So if they were changed, for instance, the, uh, R B where it says the whole highlighted section in circumstances where it provides direction for non-disclosure. I mean, that's something that shouldn't have the ability, in my opinion, to be changed below the school level. Um, so either all the protocol or certainly the more, um, material sections, I think should be, should be brought into the policy. And again, um, I, I think the intent of the policy kind of comes from a good place. I think it needs more definition.
So I think the only thing I, um, like, so that, um, uh, discussing, uh, um, students' intentions or concerns with the parents is, uh, something that happens over a continuum, right? So as one of our, um, public comment people noted, a lot of people will go to, um, a lot of students or kids or adults who are not sure. We'll talk to a lot of people before they're comfortable talking to their parents, right? So, but that's not the same thing, um, right? As what we're talking about, which is that kind of the next step where they ask to change names. So I believe when we were talking about it, policy committee, it was felt that until you get to the place where the, where the child is asking, please change my name in the record. And please call me by different pronouns, that until that place, um, the preference of the child is supported. However, they are encouraged to bring families in, and that's how the practice is. I believe the risk is based on the, um, the individual risk assessment that, um, that's done already. Right?
So.
Yeah, so we just need to reference that. So I'm, I'm fine in clarifying because clarifying is always good.
Yeah. So specifically with, so yes, so answers, yes, right? If some, if, if, if a student is talking to people, um, they have some, um, care. Pretty well, right? If, if, but, um, if the report card, if name, like, if names on the report cards are being changed and teachers are being put in a situation where they have to, they're in a difficult circumstance. That's to your, Megan, that's to your one, that's what we're talking about here.
I, I don't, I don't understand if I teach at schools, that's, you know, just as they have.
Yeah, I mean, if, if a student, um, is in a situation, if the parent goes to a teacher, teacher, teacher conference and they're referring to a student by, uh, actually their chosen name or dead name, wherever the flip-flop is, um, um, in terms of, of, um, um, the, the teacher then having to revert back. I'm, I'm calling student A, but now I'm in the position where I am referring to student as B. Um, that, that, to me, um, is, is what we're talking about, when we're talking about, um, intentional, um, supporting. And I, and again, there's reasons for that, right? There's reasons for that, and there's circumstances that that needs to happen. In this document, it says, when notifying the family carries risks for the student. Risks is not a defined term. And sa, and then later in the document, it says safety. So my interpretation of risk would be very difficult, very different from, um, another person. And I also think that the decision makers, because again, the change was notifications of super. But counselors, based on, it needs also to be defined terms. So you, so, so, so using generic terms like counselors' risk and safety concerns, again, fully supportive of this. I think more clarifications needed, um, to, uh, at, at the very least, um, make the public more aware of what this policy is and what it is not.
Right, so how about we, um, bring that to policy committee next week for our discussion to clarify and make sure that the federal language is reflective of, um, the concerns and make sure that it represents what we're, and then from there, we can bring that back to the school community.
That's great. Just to, sorry. Um, I think just to make clarity as well, like, when I think of our front policy, we have, we have a step, we have like a 10-step process that we go through the students and the board for their policy. It's, it's not, it's not clear to me, like, it does, just of the fact that the student wants a different name, trade or support plan.
No.
Right? Like, it's almost not clear at the point of the step that, or someone, at least to, I don't think to the public that. When a support plan is developed, who is developing a support plan? What steps are followed in support plan? And what step do I get to parental notification and decision? Um, when that decision is made, how is that entered into the record? Do you, do other adults in the schools are then notified? Do other teachers know that, for example, the student is not saying the code of the code, so we do meet with the parents? You have to refer by one version or the other? I think there's just a lot of confusion around how this works. Um, and I think being able to say, for example, on our front plan, we have a, we have a licensed medical professional has to do that assessment. Because they're bound by the professional practice laws and things like that, they do things, and they have their guidelines that they follow. Um, it's, the superintendent isn't making the decision, and he is following the guidance of what's happened at a previous meeting and an assessment of him, and we should refer to that. Superintendent will be using the X at the time of decision-making to, to do Y. I think some of that clarity will need a lot of the concerns. Um, and maybe clarify things, clarify what is an otherwise a very challenging situation for everybody involved, particularly for the, for the normal students. Um, but it's just, when I was reading this, it still was not very clear to me how this is actually going to be rolled out, what the trigger was. Um, how these students are supported. And like, one of the public comments was like, if a student is at risk, does that trigger, for example, by default, we then notify DCYF that this student child feels they're at risk at home because of their identity? Yes or no? I don't, I'd like, what, does a teacher sit there and say, am I supposed to make, am I a mandated reporter? Am I reporting now? Am I not reporting now? Is that in the staff manual? Is it not in the staff manual? I'm just not, I don't know how I, as a person who was involved in a situation like that would be guided by this policy and protocol to be able to support these students. Only it's consistent with what I think.
So we can, uh, make sure that the team of people that's engaged in that is available. And any teacher that has any concerns would be able to reach out to the council that would be established. Um, just to say though, it's really, this pretty much exact same protocol has been working really well for the district for the last seven years. So, um, I appreciate making some specific changes, but in general, this is kind of how it falls and, um, and families have. Um, I think at the beginning, it was not going very well, but as, as we moved on, I think that, uh, it is well received.
I think it's the case as well, we're just catching up with our students because many of them, you know, just put out incredible people who are just helping to move out. And maybe wants, wants to turn to the fun, so.
Interestingly, um, at SEO, you know, at Hope and Wellness, Joanne really had said that she felt like, uh, things were actually so good at the high school that we could move away from a place where you're having to kind of protect the student and move more towards a place of like, having it be more positive thing. Uh, because she felt like things were that good for students at high school. So I think that speaks volumes to our community in terms of the support that students have. Um, and, uh, um, I think that we still need those as backup for the students, but yeah, I appreciate the point. Yeah, yeah.
Just send the actual.
Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to, I think a motion to send the gender support policy. And inclusion policy back to policy for further.
All those are favorite?
Yeah.
And we are ten oh one on the watch. The bird, these things, but going further.
I mean, I'm good tabling, but I, I have a point of order, maybe if we table things that are popular worse next time.
Um, these. How about the item number? Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so how about we do that? So, right then, so the rest of them were located on to our next meeting then. Or agenda, okay, so down a motion to table items O N O P T R T.
M, oh, M, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm doing, all right. So TJ's so moved and I'm seconding.
All those are favorite? So we, that are, item M, which is discussed, I, on the second read of accessibility of the school, the district policy.
Thank you to the man. Thank you to Amanda for, for.
I know this has just been such a long standing ask.
I make a motion to. I make a motion to. To approve the accessibility and inclusion in school and district events policy.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say hi?
Hi.
Okay, we have agenda setting. Email me, just question. Announcements, like we have any resignations?
Yep.
Just to, we have a resignation of Allison Tate. Mary Ray and Sarah Ritchie, who is our fifth person. Mary and Allison, Matt. Yeah, so I'd like to thank everyone for this.
Well.
Yeah.
All right, um, the. It's not an agenda, but like, just the people at Solos, and the heads and medals about their decision. And if this committee should be acting in a way that. You may not be aware of, if there's a record, any contributions.
Maybe the committee would be, uh. The staffing. Ninety, you know, this is nothing around to the staff itself, but. It's a decision moving forward for the different, it's the environment of themselves, and it's things to found, and thinking of the. You know, the anticipating, but every teachers and whatever school will be in, will provide its own. It's not like a. I don't want to treat it like it's like a.
They're, they're all gonna get.
Yeah.
We don't want to.
There wasn't a collection of.
No, it has nothing to do with that, like how hard it took us, we took us.
And if there are voice, will be four of you, right? Look at, who many, yeah, fourth and fifth grade into the, the thing that traditionally paid a preschool. Tate, you're absolutely.
Yeah. Patrick, I mean, I'll be. Yes, this interview has, it's kind of, the news broke now, so if we can get that out in the morning tomorrow, so.
Oh, I'll mention this tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I have, has currently.
Basically.
Well, yeah, okay. Right then, we have a motion to adjourn. One more.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I talked about it, we talked about it. I can't see what the harm, probably baby, and if for that, or you know, like, you know, point just. Put it on and in that.